Board members, any other questions or comments? Thank you very much. And there is a board hearing that'll be coming up and then we'll be addressing this at another meeting. Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is unfinished business board policies. Members of the board, the Policy Review Committee asks that the board accept this report of the committee's recommendation to amend the following board policies. Policy 5110, admission. Policy 5460, renumbered as policy 5570, searches. Policy 5500, code of student conduct. Policy 8120, purpose, role, and responsibilities of the Board of Education. These recommendations are presented to you on tonight's agenda as Exhibit O. Do I have a motion to adopt the recommendations of the board's Policy Review Committee? Thank you, Ms. Mack. No second is needed since the recommendation comes from the committee. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed? The motion carries. The next item on the agenda is unfinished business superintendent's proposed operating budget. And for that, we call forward Dr. Scrivens, Mr. Harris, and Mr. Tantliff.
Thank you. I will just indicate that we have updated the questions submitted by the board, all of which are posted. And we are hoping this evening that with the 30 minutes allotted in your schedule, that the board may wish to focus on any amendments and associated motions that will allow us to bring back a final total board-proposed budget for the February 25th meeting.
Board members, questions, comments? Ms. Mack?
Mr. Saris, on page 114 of the budget book, the eighth line down shows school counselors, 110 in elementary, 75 in middle, 106 in high school. It also shows 58 in other. Can you provide more information on where those 58 other school counselors are?
Did you say 110?
114.
114. Unless Dr. Nieves or Zarchin have anything to add, that would be something that we would have to look up. Typically, they are either in special programs, or they could be itinerant, working for a number of schools. But I don't have a specific answer for you.
But you can get back to me on that?
Yes.
Okay. And on that same page, the projected enrollment in the top right-hand corner is 111,0269. But on page 18 of the budget book, our enrollment is at 115,038, which is a difference of 3,769. Can you tell me why we show that difference? Or why we have a number that's different here than the number that we often all use, 115,000?
I think the difference is programs.
Can you explain that?
I believe that the numbers on this page are...
Those are strictly the numbers that... To which the ratios on the prior page are applied in our formula for classroom instruction. And as Witt said, they're...
Programs, stuff that isn't subject to ratios.
So does that mean we're providing services for approximately 3,700 students outside of the schoolhouse?
Well, they're in the schoolhouse, but they would be programs that are not.
Right. So one of the answers to the board's question dealt with Spark, for example, extended year.
Okay, that's what I'm trying to get to.
And that would approximate that number and, I think, account for most of those, that variance.
Excuse me, Ms. Hen has a footnote that she can actually read.
Ms. Mack, footnote number one explains what it excludes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Home assignment, evening, and special schools. Thank you, I did not see that. Board question 123, ask about devices for paraeducators. And staff's response was that BCPS is currently working on a plan regarding paraeducator device access based on input. This could carry a cost of up to 1.5 million. If there are at most 1,100 paraeducators, why is this total 1.5 million instead of 330,000, which would be 1,100 times approximately $300 for a Chromebook?
Jim, do you want to take that?
Evening, Ms. Mack, how are you?
Hi.
So that number is based on an understanding of what would be issued to a para. So if paras were to be issued, the same device that a staff member would be issued, it would be about an $1,100 device. If we were to issue a para Chromebook, then it would be a much lower cost. But that's why we gave you an upper limit. Without further input, we haven't been able to narrow down exactly what that device would look like.
Okay, so there's no compelling reason that you know of that they would need what a teacher or has. You just gave us the upper limit?
So again, based on what the need would be. So if we were to say we wanted to mirror what the student interaction would be, for the next year at least, high school pairs would all need to have a PC, because that's what the students would carry. So at the elementary school currently, we have Chromebooks, which would be something that would mirror that. At the middle school, until this budget is passed, we have proposed Chromebooks. But again, until those decisions are made, I can't give you a hard number.
Okay, so it's somewhere between 330,000 and 1.5 million?
That would be a great estimate, yep.
Thank you.
Sure.
So as part of board member questions, staff provided Exhibit 1A, which includes curriculum instruction, digital subscriptions, software licensing fees, and 1B, which is innovative learning subscriptions and software licensing fees. The total FY 2021 projected expenditures for curriculum instruction are 2.6 million. Most of the contracts on 1B are included on 1A, but there are four contracts that are not. And I can tell you which ones they are if you want.
Yes, go ahead.
ARA 21019, JMI 61715, JNI 74316, JNI 75416. And then of the four of them, one expired on January 31st, and that's the JMI 61715. So my question is, Ms. Hen submitted a question. It was the first question on the list of board questions, and it asked for the usage data. And usage data was not provided on 1A, it was provided on 1B. Can you help me understand why?
Whatever data that the Department of Technology and academics can extract from the software to provide the number of students, or hits, or licenses that we have was provided. So I don't...
So is it safe to say, then, on 1A, all of the things listed on 1A, we have no usage data for?
No, I don't think I can say that. I think that's probably something that we'll have to review. But I am... Let me just bring that up. Do you have it?
There's no data in it.
Yeah.
We'll need to check with Mr. Embryal.
And you can get back to me on that?
Sure.
Could you give me the names of those... The numbers of those four contracts again?
Yes, ARA-210-19.
All right.
JMI-617-15.
Yes. Yes.
JNI 754-16.
And these are the ones that are...
They're on...
...appear on both?
No, they're on... They're not on 1A.
Okay.
Everything on 1B is on 1A, except for these four contracts.
Ms. Mack, would you also... Do you know the names of those? I know you've given us the contract numbers. Do you have the name of the product?
Unfortunately, I don't, because when I printed those sheets, the products... Actually, wait a minute. 21019 is SIRZ Researcher.
Mm-hmm.
SIRZ...
Yes.
Something else. And, hold on. Oh, my. I'm sorry, I don't remember the first... There are all three things on the same contract.
SIRZ Discover, SIRZ Issues, Researcher.
Yeah, but there's the one above that.
Culturegrams.
Thank you, yes.
Ms. Mack, I think on 1A, the column where they have usage listed is what they could find data on usage.
I don't think... Hold on.
Or in 1B, I mean, in column K.
Yeah, there's no usage at all on 1A.
On 1B, in column K, I believe that's what they had usage data on, but we'll follow up.
Okay. And then on 1A, we had projected FY 2021 expenditures, but we were not provided that information for those four contracts that are on 1B. There was no FY 2021 expenditures on 1B at all.
Well, those would be budgeted or projected, since we're talking about that fiscal year, right? In other words, there's no actual FY 21 projection or expenditure.
Well, there's continued spending on the contract.
We'll have to determine if that is going to be... If they're going to continue to use that program, if we can project those for you.
Well, that's actually one of my next questions. I only have two more. As previously mentioned above, on the innovative learning sheet, so that's 1B, contract JMI 61715 for Class Flow shows total expenditures of 2,762,991, which is $12,991 over the Contract Spending Authority. But what's more relevant to this discussion is this is a product that we've had since January 2015. We've spent $2.7 million, and there's been... There's no usage data available, which I find concerning. And I've been told that we have trainers in schools teaching Class Flow, so I would think we would have usage data. And then we have a... This contract ended January 31st of this year. So if the contract expired, do... Does that... Do you know if the FY 21 budget includes any dollars whatsoever for Class Flow?
If it's not listed on this spreadsheet, I do not. Contracts do expire. Sometimes they're replaced, sometimes they aren't. And it may be that curriculum instruction has not planned to replace it. Or they may be going to rebid it and move away from this particular product. So that would be something we'll have to follow up with you on.
Okay. And then on ARA 21019, and that's the one, I think, that are the SIRZ Researcher, SIRZ Discovery, and whatever Mr. Embryal just said.
Culturegram.
Culturegram. There's an annual cost associated with those three products of $300,000. Yet, with the usage provided, all three of them only had 464 views in the last six months. I'm curious, what is the continued justification for funding a product that only had 464 views in six months for an average of $107 per view?
I can speak to that, Ms. Mack. So part of the research database for SIRZ is... It provides resources that search for controversial issues, famous people, country states, animals. So oftentimes, the decision is that they may offer research on topics that other databases do not. So I understand your concern is the volume. And what I'm saying is some databases offer a unique set of research resources.
But with a budget as tight as ours, the question I ask is, can we really afford to pay $107 a search? Or a view, excuse me, not a search, a view. And let me clarify, view.
I just want to clarify, the $98,000 on there, that should have been represented one time. That's the cost of all three of those products.
Right. And if you divide 98,000 by 464, it's 107... Well, actually, it's 214, but I cut it in half because it's a six-month view. So it's $107 a view.
Well, but I want to make sure that we're correct on the cost. It's $98,000 for all three tools. It's the SIRZ... The SIRZ package is 98... Is the $98,000 represented.
Right. And I only did the calculation on the 98,000, but the Contract Spending Authority is 300,000.
How many years?
From 18 through 23.
Five years.
Right, it's a multi-year spending authority.
But I guess my question still is the same. Given a tight budget situation, when we have teachers asking for raises and five bargaining units asking for raises, can we really afford to spend $107 per view, regardless of the level of information that it provides? And that might be just a rhetorical question, so I'm not even asking you to answer it. I do have one more question, and, Mr. Saris, you'll probably be happy that it's not for There have been a lot of discussions, and this was... I sent this question in, and the answer's not going to be for another week or so, but I think it's incumbent upon us to discuss it here because it relates to the budget, and it might have budget implications. There's been a lot of talk about the 34 resource teachers, and I am confused about the resource teachers in... Specifically, in the GTCAC or the Office of Advanced Academics. And the reason I am confused, I attended the meeting where it was acknowledged that there were eight people, and seven of them were leaving Advanced Academics, leaving the coordinator, one resource teacher, and an administrative assistant. The weekly update that I asked for in November, a breakdown of resource teachers by department, shows seven resource teachers in the Office of Advanced Academics. But the budget shows a total of five, five professionals and one support person. Why is there a discrepancy in that information?
Well, most of the resource teachers are actually within the schools, so there's a mixture. They may be assigned to the office, but they show up in the budget book under the school allocation.
But we had a very extensive meeting last week for the GTCAC, and there was nobody... There was tons of discussion, and nobody ever said, well, let me clarify that there's only five people. It was acknowledged that there were eight people total, eight resource teachers total, seven were going out of the Office of Advanced Academics. But we don't even have them funded in the budget book for FY 21 proposed or FY 20 adjusted.
The eight are in the office, but they just don't all show up in the office because they're in... Some are in the school... Within the resource teacher bucket, some are... Show up in the offices. They may be assigned to the office, but they're still within the school bucket, so to speak. But they're still assigned to that office. But they wouldn't show up there. They would show up on the report that you were probably provided by HR.
No, actually, I was... I don't know who provided it, but I asked specifically for...
Eight is the number they have. Eight is the number that HR is showing.
Well, no, HR's showing seven. The GTCAC conversation talks about eight, and the budget shows five.
Yeah, we will have that... We compiled this information, and it will go to the board on Friday.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I don't have any further questions.
Dr. Williams wanted to chime in.
I just want to clarify, upon the development of the proposed budget, there was extensive conversation about the allocation, particularly around resource teacher. And so we will try our best to provide an answer, but that's the work that this office has been doing to clarify whether it was a grant, whether it was coming out of special ed, whether it was coming out of academics, whether it was coming out of school base. And so we will try our best. But, Ms. Mack, I think that's the work that is going to take us some time, because this situation just didn't happen this year. This has been years in making of the allocation of resource teacher, and actually, the clear definition of what a resource teacher is. So we will provide a response, but I just want to caution the board, this is going to take some... This is like a puzzle that we're trying to unpack, and it's years in the making. And so I thank Dr. McComas and the community superintendents for being at the GTCAC meeting and trying to respond to those questions about why we had to move some resource teachers back into the school building.
So I appreciate those remarks, Dr. Williams. At the same time, I can understand Ms. Mack and other board members that may be asking questions, wanting to have them answered, because this is the work session where board members are supposed to make any motions, or amendments, or modifications to the budget before we take the vote in two weeks. So if we don't have sufficient information at this meeting, then we may end up needing to make additional adjustments at the February 25th meeting. So I think we just need to have that as an understanding as we move forward.
I appreciate that, Ms. Causey. I just want to remind the timeline. It's not a timeline that we've created, it's a timeline that the county created. So in two weeks, we should have a proposed budget that's going to the county. And so I think at some point, I'm interested in hearing some motions to get some idea of what we may need to do to come back on the 25th with close to a proposed budget for the entire board to approve.
Okay, Ms. Rowe, I see you raise your hand, and then I have something to say after that.
So on page five of the budget highlights that we got last week, under Learning Accountability and Results, there are $6.7 million allocated for Title I and Focus Schools. And one of the budget questions mentions 10 Focus Schools. So can you tell me what a Focus School is, and which schools are the Focus Schools? And are we piloting a new program? What exactly is a Focus School?
Right now, that program is 83 of the highest need schools in the district. So that was 1.5 FTEs Dr. Williams wanted to allocate to each of the 83 schools, which would include all of the Title I schools also, and the schools that are close to being Title I.
So that this money is for 10 schools?
83 schools. You said it was the Title I initiative? Maybe we misunderstood you, Ms. Rowe.
No.
Which initiative?
It's a Focus School, so...
I can clarify. So, Ms. Rowe, my understanding is that those teaching positions would go towards those schools that are currently identified as Title I, and then the 15 schools that just don't make the cutoff to receive Title I supports.
15 or 10 schools?
83 schools total.
Yeah.
In that program, times 1.5 FTEs each.
So is this money an expansion of that program for the 10 Focus Schools?
No, referring to them as Focus Schools is a new expression for us, and the idea is that those are the schools that we recognize that they have a high poverty rate. Their poverty rate, however, doesn't hit the threshold to actually receive Title I funds, so we want to supplement them with additional resources.
Okay, so when it says 10...
Then that would be the 10 just below the threshold of schools...
It may be 10 elementary, but it's more than just 10, I believe, isn't it?
It's 83. 83 schools.
83 includes the Title I schools.
Yes.
Okay, but so there's 10 Focus Schools that don't qualify for Title I, but they're just above that threshold. Is it because there's only 10 that meet that criteria in the county? Or did you select 10? Or what are the 10?
I'm not sure where you're seeing the 10.
On the handout, the flyer. So the sub...
It's between 40... The schools with 48 to 55 percent.
Learning and Accountability and Results, there's $6.7 million.
I think one of the questions gave the 10.
Oh, one of the... Yeah, one of the answers to the questions gave the 10 Focus Schools. So I just want to know if we're citing 10 Focus Schools for additional allocations, which 10 schools these are? And are we... Is there only 10 in the county that we're doing this for? Are we doing... I'm confused as to...
So I do not have the list of those 10 schools that just missed the Title I threshold in front of me. And it is a differentiate support, so not all schools would be receiving that. It would be those 10 that just missed the cutoff for receiving Title I funds.
Okay.
The idea is a tiered system of support, so that we know schools that are impoverished... The most impoverished schools, of course, receive the supplemental Title I funds. Schools that also are impoverished, but not impoverished enough to receive the federal funds, would then get some supplemental support.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Causey?
Yes.
Are we doing everyone's question first and then motions?
Motion.
Because I have two motions. I'm happy to... I don't feel like more questions are going to add or take away from them.
Certainly.
Okay, so my first motion is an amendment I'm calling Pay Equity. And I move that BCPS amend the current budget so that employees who are not represented by bargaining units be ineligible for pay increases that are greater in percentage than the increase given to the bargaining unit which has given the least percent increase. Percentage increases may be averaged across the bargaining unit for that year to determine the average percent increase and added to COLA increase to establish a maximum percent increase allowable for employees not represented by a bargaining unit. Current terms of employment contracts and legally mandated increases in the minimum wage take precedence over this motion. And if I may speak to that motion...
Second.
Oh, second.
Second.
Okay, so if I may speak to that motion, one of the things I noticed when going through salary increases across multiple sections of the budget book is that we have various departments where maybe you have four, five, one, two, three people who work in that office. Some of them may be represented by bargaining units, some of them are not. But it seems like the percent increase in wages can be anywhere from 1% to 7%. And to me, it seems like it's... When I look at even the incomes, some of our positions, if the same income... If that position existed in the government sector, doing almost exactly the same thing, those employees would have the amount of money that they're making in the school system. And so to also have our hardest-working, in-the-schoolhouse people who are begging for even the smallest raises, I feel like people who aren't represented by bargaining units are somehow getting much higher incomes and much higher raises than some of our hardest-working people in the schoolhouse. So I feel that tying those staff, who are the highest paid in our county, and... those staff who are the highest paid in our county and not represented by bargaining units to the pay increases that our bargaining units get creates an equitable situation that will discourage unjustified wage inflation.
Are there board member questions or comments related to Ms. Rowe's motion? We're going to try and keep it tight to Robert's rules of order with speaking to a motion no more than twice and for, you know, a minimum amount of time that's necessary. Ms. Hen?
So, looking at the data itself and Ms. Rowe's motion, this equates to approximately nine million. And again, I rely on our experts to give us the exact number, but in terms of an increase of, say, 2%, using that as an example, if we were to look at nonrepresented or, I should say, non, looking at non-school-based increases across the system, those, if we were to look at the difference between a 2% increase and the increases that this budget represents, we'd be looking at a difference of roughly nine million. And that nine million redirected to, as Lilly said, whether it be teacher pay, administrator pay, these are choices that this board needs to make. And it's why I'm supporting her motion because I do believe there are some inequities that we need to address as a board. We heard from our bargaining units tonight. Teacher retention especially is a major crisis facing not only the system, but facing our nation. We are attracting fewer and fewer teachers and we are losing teachers at an alarming rate. And we need to address that through pay. And this is one way that we do so. So, it's why I'm supporting this motion.
Mr. Kuhn.
So, I just have a question so that I fully understand the impact of this. So, are you talking about what we approve? Or what the eventuality of the budget looks like once the county executive and the county council approve and manage or cut or whatever they do to the budget?
So, the idea is that, let's say with what happened last year, one of the, two of the bargaining units were not given anything until later. So, our employees who are not represented by bargaining units would, the max amount of pay increase they could get would be whatever the average that the bargaining unit that got the least would get. Based on what's ultimately approved.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Joe's and then Mr. McMillian.
So, I don't know if this is a question for you, Dr. Williams, or for Mr. Saris. What are the number of employees that are not part of a bargaining unit?
So, we have 16,383 employees. 123 are not part of a bargaining unit. And for, I want to say, almost all of those 123, they currently mirror the, any cost of living raise that's negotiated by either CASE or ESPBC. So, for instance, this year, neither CASE did not get a cost of living adjustment. And so, about half of the, about 62 of those nonrepresented employees did not get a cost of living adjustment. And most of the remainder got the 2% or 2% for ESPBC that will, that ESPBC got.
So, that's COLAs, but what about just raises?
The only raises that occur are step increases and COLAs, which as Mr. Saris mentioned, mirror bargaining units. So, there's, we talked about this last time. There's no, there is no one on staff getting any raise that is any different than generally what you're proposing, the lowest of the collective bargaining units. And one other thing to mention of the unaffiliated employees, almost half are administrative assistants, senior executive assistants, et cetera. So, 68 are executive directors, directors, chiefs.
So, it's a great motion then.
Point of order, Mr. Offerman had his, I'm sorry, Mr. McMillian had his hand up.
It's a good motion.
There's nothing.
It's not going to generate nine million dollars.
It actually wouldn't generate any revenue at all.
Excuse me, we hit a point of order call. So, Mr. McMillian had his hand raised, so we're going to turn the floor over to you, Mr. McMillian.
Ms. Rowe, would this include tripwage adult, additional adult assistance in the school buildings that aren't represented by bargaining units?
Well, sure, but I believe, are they making minimum wage presently? Because they're going to get increases just by virtue of minimum wage increases, which in my motion, I didn't include that because the state has increased the minimum wage.
Mr. Tantliff.
Just one clarification. The additional assistance are not FTEs and they're not in bargaining units. So, Ms. Rowe is correct. Right now, they're rising as the minimum wage eventually makes its way to $15 an hour over the next few years.
Thank you, Ms. Scott.
Thank you. So, I guess I'm still trying to understand, what impact would Ms. Rowe's motion have on, I guess it would be these 183 people who are not in a bargaining unit?
There would be no financial impact versus what's currently occurring, but possibly it would be a control in the future over a situation that, it would ensure, I guess, that that happens, but that is what is actually happening.
So, it's already happening right now and there would be no financial impact if this motion were to pass?
There's none that I see. Do you see any?
No, in other words, it wouldn't.
The budget would be exactly the same, isn't it?
Exactly the same.
Yeah, we built that in to the numbers that you have.
Ms. Hen and then Ms. Mack.
Okay, so, Mr. Tantliff, then maybe you can help us understand or gain a better understanding then of the salaries and wages category, if there are expenses that are not obvious on the surface that are included there? Because what we're seeing is a percent increase that's significantly higher than what would be expected based on COLAs and steps for central offices.
It's a department by, department by department analysis. So, in the questions, there were numerous departments with that question that we answered. So, there's two different things that happen. One is if you compare actuals to budget anywhere, it'll look like a larger increase because there's always going to be some vacancies. So, that will make it appear that there's a higher increase. If new positions are added anywhere, and you don't take that into account and you're just taking salaries 21 versus salaries 20, well, any new positions are going to be included in the 21 as well as COLAs and steps. Since the units we're talking about got a June 30th 2% COLA, they didn't get anything in 20. That looks in the budget book like a 2% COLA because there's no overlap in 20, right? It looks like it's a 2% 21 COLA. Of course, if you're talking about TAPCO, they had it all year, so that overlap doesn't exist. There's a 1% COLA baked into the scenario and there's a step increase. So, for all bargaining units in the budget book, everyone has the same FY '21 assumptions applied to them. There's a modest COLA and a step plus any overlaps from FY '20. Now, once all the collective bargaining is done, things may look a little different, but that's what's in the budget right now.
So, and the vacancy makes sense. So, the examples I'm thinking about, the headcount is flat, so there are no increased positions. So, those are taken out of the equation. Office of Visual Arts, let me give you an example. The FY '19 actuals were 202,000. The FY '20 budget, 302,000 for two professional positions, no support staff positions for an increase of 49%. Is that an example that you had mentioned of a vacancy? Or how, to what do you attribute that increase?
Most likely that would be the case, but I'd have to go look if it's a question we answered. I mean, I don't know them all off the top of my head, but that's the only plausible explanation. If you had one position vacant for half a year, you only have two people, that's a quarter of the whole budget.
And that makes sense. And, but the answers that were provided to the board were what you had just said, that the COLA and steps were the response and that doesn't add up. So, I'm asking for greater clarity.
I think we did look, though. If a position got added, we said it was due to positions, COLA, step, vacancies.
So, these were the responses that were just provided.
That's going to be in the spreadsheet that we're working on now, the 57 instances of that. And the explanation will be along those same lines. The difference between actuals of '19, the budget of '20 and the budget of '21 are going to show a lot of disparity because the actual expenses are going to include vacancies and other changes in incumbency and compensation and so forth. But the rates are the same.
Okay, and there aren't any other expenses that would not be obvious on the surface that we're not thinking about when we look at these numbers and that we should be taking into consideration? These are pure, what you see is what you get, salaries for these positions?
At a specific office, there could be something like they took some non-salary dollars and budgeted for a contractual employee or a temporary, you know, a contractual employee. There might be new types of EDAs that maybe someone in CNI is supporting. But that's not a material part of this discussion. But I'm just saying, there could be things other than an FTE that could have a small impact at a very granular level, not at a macro level.
Okay, so you see Ms. Rowe's motion as more of a control rather than a fiscal impact on this budget in terms of if we support it?
Yes, that's how I see it.
Thank you. Board members, any other questions or comments? I just want to state that I'm going to support the motion, I think, as a control and as a statement by the board in terms of equity pay. I think that, I think that it's a good idea. Anyone else? All in favor?
I'd like for you to just reiterate the control, to reiterate the control piece. As a control, what does that mean to you?
Well, Ms. Rowe's motion was basically saying the lowest increase of any bargaining unit that's agreed to collectively would be what applies to all unaffiliated employees. So, if there were, and many years, everyone gets the same cost of living, but if there was one, you know, 20 would be a good example. If one bargaining unit got 2% and another one got 1%, unaffiliated employees could get no more, would get the 1%.
Now, I understand clearly what she is suggesting, but you're saying, or you said, that right now, it's there, that it's happening anyway. So, when you talk about controls, control over what? Are you talking about a control next year, year after next, et cetera? I just need that articulated. So, I get what the word control means in terms of the motion. If right now, we have the situation in play, what does that mean?
I think it's giving the board confidence that that will always occur. You're essentially memorializing that.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor of Ms. Rowe's motion, please raise your hand. Any opposed? Any abstained? The motion fails for lack of a majority. I'm sorry. That's right, because of the student member, the board does not vote on budget six counts, so the motion carries. Thank you.
Should I do my second motion or do you want me to wait for that?
I had a motion that I wanted to put forward. And I have a handout. Could you pass this along? Thank you. I move that staffing for the Office of Advanced Academics be restored to that which is shown on page 250 of the fiscal year '21 proposed budget book. One coordinator, one administrative assistant and four resource teachers at a minimum. The financial impact is neutral because it's already proposed in the book. Oh, I'm sorry, I have a motion, is there a second? Thank you, Ms. Mack. I'm going to speak to my motion. The financial impact is neutral because it was already reflected in the original proposed budget book. Also, we have heard significant feedback from our Gifted and Talented Citizens Advisory Committee that has worked extensively for years. And the issue is that while we transition to more school-based resources, it will be helpful to, as the GTCAC president said, that we have this right now very experienced group in Gifted and Talented and they can support the growth of the professional development of those school-based academic advancement facilitators. This staffing will support the MSDE Maryland's Gifted and Talented Student Identification Model to identify 10% of all grade three students in the school system, identify the top 5% of grade three students in every school in the school system based upon the state mandated assessments in mathematics and English Language Arts. It will also be able, allow them to document advanced learning behaviors in pre-K through 2 and multiple measures from the list of MSDE approved assessments and checklists to identify additional students. So, for those reasons and the many, many more that were articulated in the emails and the comments that were given to us by GTCAC, I would appreciate your support of this motion. Board members, questions or comments? Mr. Kuhn. I'm sorry, Mr. Kuhn just raised his hand. Ms. Mack seconded the motion.
Mr. Kuhn.
So, my question about these resources is where are they slated to go now? Are they going into schools to provide, provide actual hands-on work with children? Or, I don't know what they're, I guess, maybe Dr. Williams or someone.
Yeah, I'm happy to answer that. So, all of the resource teachers, regardless of what office that they were reduced from, will follow the priority teacher transfer process. And in that process, they have several options. So, they can be, a principal can hire them to be a classroom teacher. They can also, they're still within the timelines that if they so choose, they could apply and go through the process to pursue becoming a staff development teacher. They're still within the timeline to apply and pursue the opportunity of becoming a consulting teacher. They're still within the timeline to apply and pursue being a department chair, which would also be at a school level position. And they also are still within the window of time to apply and pursue being an assistant principal. So, the answer is they're not taken directly from a singular office and directly placed at a particular location. They would be interviewing with principals for school-based positions or they would be interviewing for those other opportunities.
So, just to follow on, this decision was made for a reason and they are coming out of the GT or the Advanced Academics area. So, can you describe the decision-making to, is it just to add them back to the classroom? I mean, you named a number of opportunities for them, but.
Yeah, so certainly, the overall concept was to reduce the central office resource teachers and to increase then those positions, those FTEs then become reallocated back to school-based positions. In terms of how we discerned where cuts were made, cuts were made from virtually every single office within CNI. There's only a few offices, for example, that were not cut. ESOL was not cut. The four resource teachers that we have in central office that actually are teachers of record for the students in the detention center, they were not cut because they actually serve students directly. And so, what we do is we went through and looked at what is the work and how do we reallocate that work? A huge. A huge piece, as both our president of the GTCAC spoke to and our board members spoke to, a lot of the work that our GT resource teachers do is go out and provide professional development. When I looked at the work that our resource teachers do in the offices, and in that office in particular, a lot of it is going out and providing professional development to teachers and to faculties. That work would then be picked up at the building level by our staff development teachers next year, who would be, who would receive monthly professional learning on all the unique qualities and characteristics of gifted learners. Some of the topics that we have been, that are particularly important, is how to appropriately differentiate for the gifted learner, how to provide social-emotional learning supports for the gifted learner, as well as how do we recognize and ensure that students who are twice exceptional receive supports both for their giftedness as well as for any learning disadvantages that they may have. In addition to the work that they provide at schools around the screening and identification process, that is where now, what we currently have and what would be different in next year is, we currently have at each school, an academic facilitator. I'm missing a letter in that acronym, but every school has, thank you, Advanced. Thank you. It's been up since 4:30, so. But right now, we have one person who does that building. By building the capacity of our staff development teacher, we are actually working to develop a team to champion gifted learning at each school as opposed to there sort of being individual people who get support through consulting. You know, our resource teachers go out and provide consulting service. And now we're trying to build a team that lives in the school, knows the students, and can support the classroom teacher, someone who's right down the hall as opposed to, I need to wait maybe a day or two or a week until they can come out to my school. So that's part of how we're reallocating the work.
So Ms. Joe's, and then Ms. Rose, and then Ms. Scott.
Thank you. So what was the reasoning for moving the GT teachers out of central office? And I distinctly remember this board making a huge push for moving central office staff out into the schoolhouse, and now I see, I find a resistance to it as well. So can you explain what the reasoning was to move these teachers out into the schoolhouse? And I think you explained some of it, so I might be redundant, but what motivated you guys to make that move?
Well, let me try to respond. I'm sure Dr. McComas will respond as well. So a part of my 100-day entry plan and the visits, the recurring issue was around the conditions for success. And so the thinking was, when I looked at the residency model, which was a good response in terms of what the system was trying to do, the sustainability in a school building was a question in terms of folks coming in for two weeks, leaving, going to another school, going to another school, and eventually circling back. So the model, in order to do this, the model was to look at elementary school, as Dr. McComas talked about, having a group in the building to provide that support to our staff and to focus on the learning. So that would be the principal, assistant principal, the staff development teacher, the reading specialist, and the math lead or math resource teacher at an elementary school. So that's the group that would be providing support in their own building. Hence, we have developed a Goal III of the workforce improvement and human capital, and so we're front-loading the professional development during the summer so staff members can go back and start providing that support within a school building. The secondary, we've had the principal, assistant principal, or assistant principals based on a secondary level, and a stat teacher. But we also had positions called department chairs. Those are the content specialists, they know their content, and we wanted to free them up to provide that support and coaching in a school building. Unlike the residency model, folks would come in, again, great model at the time, I'm looking at sustainability. So how do we build that capacity? Well, we have to give them that opportunity to work with their teams within a department or the middle school team leaders to work with their grade level, to provide support to those staff members in terms of coaching, look at the instructional program. So the model is shifting, instead of it's coming from the central office and we're rotating from school to school, we're trying to put the professional development in the school building, and I really want to build that sustainability by building the capacity of those individuals, whether it's elementary or secondary.
So have those schools been identified, and is it going to be really targeting the schools that have not as much gifted and talented students, you know, in terms of equity? There are schools that have a huge percent of gifted and talented, some schools don't. So what kind of schools would be targeted?
Well, this model is for all of our schools. So we're doing, we're shifting to have this model in our elementary and our secondary schools. In terms of special ed, we'll have training around special ed, we'll have training around advanced academics slash GT. We'll still have the GTAA facilitator extra-duty assignment. So we'll still have that piece, which is the compliance and paperwork. This is around about instruction. It's about instructional leadership and using key people in the building to provide that on a regular basis.
Ms. Rose, and then Ms. Pestur.
So, Ms. McComas?
And then Ms. Pestur, okay, thank you.
It sounded to me in your description like basically these resource teachers that were accessing those positions, and then they have to find their own position within the system or somewhere else, but I didn't hear in the list of positions, and maybe I missed it, can these resource teachers from the central office not apply to be development teachers in the schoolhouse?
No, they can't, they are still within the window to apply to be staff development teachers.
But if they don't find an opening within the school system, the position is accessed and they don't work for us anymore? Is that what you're saying?
No, they will definitely find a position within our school system. They are employees. If, and these typically are professionals who, as Ms. Miller-Brewit spoke to their expertise in whether they're a resource in GT or a resource from any other content office, they've demonstrated that they have strong expertise. They are sought-after professionals at the building level as well.
Ms. Scott, and then Ms. Pestur.
Yeah, so it sounds like you kind of answered this, but I mean, that was my question as far as the level of support, and it sounds like the level of support will be at a school-based level as opposed to being from central office, which is something that I have heard this board talk a lot about, having more teachers and resources in the schoolhouse itself as opposed to everything coming from the central office. And am I understanding correctly that the resource teachers, that they can apply to any school that they would like to? Okay, so it's not like they're being sent to certain schools. They can apply anywhere in the system. Okay, and then, so I think what the concern is, is that there's maybe a void or something, like if you have them all leave, then there's going to be like a void left here. How, maybe you could speak to that. What will happen? How will that work?
Sure, so we will still have our coordinator of advanced academics, Mr. Kern, and we will also have another resource teacher as a support. Mr. Kern will be working across our other academic offices to build capacity within the academic offices. So our math team will grow their capacity around gifted learner. You know, part of this idea, you know, if we are shifting resources from a central model to push them out to schools to build strong teams at schools that live in schools and support capacity at schools, we have to also shift our model at the top. And so really, what we're doing is working to ensure that it's not in isolation or a silo, that Mr. Kern alone is not the only person responsible for gifted capacity. And so that is going to be a shift because we have thus far sort of really kind of worked in lanes, if you will. And so that will require us to engage Mr. Kern's in building capacity in the math office and the ELA office so that, again, it's building a broader capacity across the board. No one office can carry that work. I think when we think about the disparity in our numbers of students who are under-identified for gifted education, I think that really reflects, not only that we need to take a different approach, but I think it reflects the downside of working in silos unintentionally. And I think, you know, we've put, and our community is very committed to our gifted learners, and I respect and commend the work that they've done over the years to build that office back up. And so while I know that this feels very disrespectful to that work, that the intent here is to, again, build strong teams at schools, so that schools have capacity around gifted learners, and that we break out of a silo and we really cross-develop the central team so that all of us are responsible for gifted learners, just as every one of us is responsible for special needs learners.
Ms. Pestur?
Yes. Okay, I'm not real sure whether I'm addressing your motion. I'm just throwing this out in terms of the whole concept. And as Dr. McComas just said, and I know that that area, that office was built up, and it's been built in the last few years because it really was not happening, I'm going to say, seven, seven and a half years ago, because you had to get on a schedule to get someone to come in and work with your GT students. When I go to the GT meeting, I hear some of the problems, the concerns, et cetera, that still exist. So the idea of having that team in a building and there being in every building, operative word here, every building, that in every building, not just in schools that have GT because every school is supposed to have GT, but we know that sometimes we fall into a deficit of being able to identify children who really are GT. Some of them are not easy to love. Some of them have other things on their plates, and they don't get identified like children who have either a personal history or family issue, history of being in GT. So we miss some. So having a team certainly offers an opportunity to delve into that and to take a look at students who are receiving special education services who are still GT children. Having a team also says that we know how to look at children and assess whether they are GT or they're AP or they are honors, three different groups of children with different needs, different characteristics. However, I wonder who the people are for real who are going to work with them. So I can see that in that advanced academics office, there needs to be a body of people still who are able to form them, because I might, I might be an English person and not a math person, but I can count that 34 people from around the county, and I thank you, Dr. Williams, for having that conversation with me and actively listening. But I know that when people get an opportunity to interview at different places, I can, through my history, tell you where they won't interview. And it's 34 people, and those schools that are disenfranchised and lacking now, where those schools and the staff members are struggling to make excellence happen, when we start counting, not under your tenure, but in the past, how many? We're going to hold principals accountable for how many AP teachers' programs they have and GT programs they have. And we have those children in all of our schools. So I would want to make sure that, I would like to see that blend, to have those people sitting in an office somewhere, but what they do is slightly different because they are working with that team, they are working now with, instead of calling the person a stat teacher, we're calling them professional developers, and we're looking at the administrators who might need support and training as well. So I love that concept of in the school, because we are going to be able to pump our very best out of our teachers, therefore, out of our children. But they need that crew, that's, if you will, that's going to be able to help them in all areas. And because we said at those meetings, because you're GT in one area doesn't mean you're automatically GT in everything. So we need those people in those curricular areas to do that. I don't want us, I love the idea, but I don't want us to throw that baby out with the water, but we do have to spread some of them out. So I guess what I'm saying is maybe the number is not the whole number, but some that can work with the person who's in charge, the real, I want to see that plan. I want to know that all of the schools, the Woodlawn's and the Randallstown's and the middle schools that feed into them, that all of the schools are going to end up on a level playing field with this concept and not left out because they've been left out.
Ms. Joe's?
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Pestur, for putting so eloquently what I was trying to say. My point is every child in Baltimore County is gifted and talented, and everybody should get that opportunity regardless of what school they go to. So when those resource teachers get to pick, are they going to pick schools that are disenfranchised? The Woodlawn's, like she said, are they going to pick those schools? That's where I want to see the gifted and talented school program developed, not just in the Perry Halls and the Herefords, but the truly, truly disenfranchised communities, because every child is gifted and talented. So that was my concern, and I think she explained it excellently. Thank you.
Ms. Scott, sure.
Just one more question, just a follow-up on that. I guess this would be for Dr. McComas or Dr. Williams. How, if they're going out and they're choosing which schools they go to, previously with the central model, they supported, I guess, all schools, but if they're now being housed at individual schools, and we still have schools where it may be lacking or disenfranchised and not have gifted and talented, how are those schools going to get supported if it's not a central office model where it supports all schools?
Right, so that is where we come back to the importance of our staff development teacher. So our staff development teacher's job is to provide professional learning for all of the faculty and members of a school. Our staff development teachers will begin receiving monthly professional learning on gifted learners. And so if I were a staff development teacher at your school and you are a teacher, I'm going to go and get my monthly professional learning around gifted learners, gifted education, and I'm going to come back to my school, and I would work with my principal to then provide that professional learning for every teacher in our building.
But do you see how that could be a deficit, whereas if you've had somebody who's already been in that gifted and talented office and already has years of that, and they're taking that to this school, and then I'm brand-new and I'm at this school, and I'm getting up to speed?
Sure, certainly those who have been involved in gifted professional learning have an advantage over those who are new to that. That really, what I need everyone to understand is the difference in numbers here, because when we think about seven experts, and they are wonderful professionals, seven experts to 175 schools, staff development teachers, I have one per school, so I have 175 professionals who, you're right, may have a learning curve, but they can learn, and then they can be responsible for disseminating that capacity within their own school. Now, I certainly am not here to disparage the expertise that our resource teachers have, because many of them have had a passion for gifted learning and have really pursued learning about giftedness over years. And so I won't argue that, but I will tell you firsthand as a principal, having someone in my building who is a professional developer, who can learn and then can help me teach the other members of my faculty month after month after month, I think is a valuable resource.
Dr. Williams?
Let me just clarify. What we're trying to do is build the instructional leadership team in every school, just like we would have reductions, those folks who were former assistant principals, former GT, former staff development, you know, they bring a certain skill set that, of course, all schools, but the ultimate model is to really look at every school and to really build the instructional leadership team at every school. So that's what we're trying to build, to really look at why our students aren't learning, how do we close those gaps? And those students that are learning, how do we accelerate? How we give them opportunities? So I just want to... So, I just want to add that to what Dr. McComas was just sharing, is really building, and that was the message to the principals at their monthly leadership development team, was about, you can't do this work in isolation, you have to collaborate. And to define, what is that instructional leadership team? What should it look like? How are you going to build the capacity? How do you front-load the learning for everyone and front-load the, the planning for the upcoming school year? But the point was well-taken about looking at this different model and the questions and concerns that were raised.
Can that be done, though, with Kathleen's motion? Can we do that with her motion and still do the training and development and everything that you're talking about?
We're going to proceed, whatever I get, we're going to proceed with looking at training at the school building. So, whether it's a dollar or a million dollars, that needs to happen. We're not going to see gains across all 175 school centers and programs until we invest in building the capacity at the school level.
And I would just like to speak to my motion, and then I am going to have the vote, because we, I know there's a number of other issues that board members want to address, and we need to, you know, understand that we have staff here and we need to move through this. The, the points here are very well-made. I appreciate everyone's comments. And what my motion addresses is that we have accumulated specific knowledge in the GT office. And so, I am asking that four resource teachers remain for this year, and it can be evaluated next year whether they're not needed. But when we're talking about building the staff development resource teachers, the advanced academic facilitators are also teachers of record. So, this will allow, in my opinion, in conjunction with the GTCAC, to train the trainer model in a faster way, to get that GT knowledge from the resource teachers at central office out into the schools so that the learning curve is shorter for this coming year for training the trainer model, because I believe in that model. I believe the direction that Dr. Williams is headed in this case. I just think we should be more deliberate in how we make that change this year. So, Ms. Pester?
All right. Just to Ms. Causy's point, and I appreciate that you shifted to four, and, and that we still are working to that school model, because that's the only way that we're going to make a change. And in four, I would just like consideration to possibly processing with the four. See, I'm thinking northeast and central and, and each one having an area, and they are part of the team because they can be instrumental in the teaming. That's what four will do. And their focus is a little different, but the schools in each area know that they have a person to whom they may go to get assistance. And you are building that team in the school, and that as you're processing, you're processing whoever. Because we know, and we've heard people around this table saying, that not all stat teachers are equal. So, I know that means that in each school, principals get the opportunity to make possibly new decisions about who that instructional, who will comprise that instructional leadership. So, thank you for going to four.
Thank you. So, I'll just repeat my motion, and then we'll take the vote. Staffing for the Office of Advanced Academics be restored to that, which is shown on page 250 of the fiscal year 21 proposed budget book. One coordinator, one administrative assistant, and four resource teachers. It was already seconded. All in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed? Any abstain? When abstained, the motion carries. Thank you. Board members, who's next? Ms. Mack?
I move to amend the proposed budget for FY 2021 to reflect that all employees represented by bargaining units, including TABCO, CASE, ESPBC, AFSMI, and OPE, receive a 2% COLA. Second?
Would you like to speak to your motion, Ms. Mack?
I think quite a few people tonight spoke to my motion, but I will say this, we're talking about a $2 billion budget, and if we don't retain our staff, we won't need a board, we don't need a superintendent, we don't, we don't need curriculum. If we don't have teachers, if we don't have people in the schoolhouses, if we don't have bus drivers, if we don't have paraeducators, then none of us is needed. So, I think my motion stands for itself.
Board members, and if we could just really keep it quick. Thank you. Ms. Rowe, and then Mr. Kuhn.
I just wanted to speak to my second. It, it seems to me only fair that if state employees are getting to 2% COLA this next year, that our school system could at least do that.
Mr. Kuhn?
So, so my question goes to the fiscal impact.
I have that.
Okay, great. And, and the second part, and I can't wait to hear that. But, but more importantly, to Dr. Williams, if, if we're increasing the budget by this much, and, no, never mind, just give me the numbers, please.
At 1%, it was 8,931,124. So, at 2%, it would be 17,862,240.
Any other board members, questions or comments? All in favor, please raise your hand. The motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Should I keep going?
Sure.
I move to amend the proposed budget for FY 2021 to reflect that all TABCO-represented employees who have reached step 30 receive a $2,000 longevity bonus.
Second? Want to speak to your motion?
I will say that we've talked about it tonight, we talk about it a lot, that we have a teacher shortage, and we need to retain the knowledge. We just talked about it with the GTCAC teachers, they have knowledge. Our experienced teachers have the knowledge that we need to share with our new teachers and perhaps ameliorate the situations that occur in classrooms that make new teachers leave. So, I think we need to recognize the value that experienced teachers have. We need to keep them so that they can help us keep our new teachers.
Mr. Kuhn, you raised your hand.
I was just, how much does that cost?
864,000.
Thank you.
Board members, questions or comments? All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously.
I move to amend the proposed budget for FY 2021 to reflect that all CASE-represented employees who have reached step 20 receive a $1,000 longevity bonus.
Second?
Gosh, okay.
Would you like to speak to your motion?
Again, I can't imagine being in a job, and I think somebody spoke to it, that we're promoting principals earlier, so they've reached 20 years earlier, and then they go the rest of their careers and not get any type of increase. I think CASE-represented employees play a very critical role in our schools, and the financial impact of this is only $58,000.
Board members, discussion? Ms. Joz, and then Mr. Saris.
What was the fiscal impact, again?
$58,000.
And do they not get any COLA increases after the 20-year period, Mr. Saris?
Is that the limit? Yeah, they would. COLAs are not impacted, just steps. Yeah, they would max out on steps, but they would still be eligible for a COLA. And I just want to define the term bonus, because a bonus is different than adding, permanently adding that increment.
And that's why I stressed bonus.
Okay. So, it is a true bonus that'll apply just for FY 21?
Right. Because I, I thought we heard that there are some discussions about structuring things, and perhaps that will care for that on a going-forward basis. I'm just addressing the immediate need to recognize people for the job they do as a bonus.
I did just want to say that Mr. Hart, excuse me, Mr. Tom DeHart from the Executive Director of CASE, just spoke this evening to the issue that COLAs don't always even cover the Consumer Price Index, so the actual cost of living. So, you know, so that's an issue.
I'm almost finished. I move that in.
Oh, excuse me. We need to vote on that one.
It's getting late.
All in favor, please raise your hand. Okay. The motion carries unanimously.
I move that in the proposed budget for FY 2021, that BCPs provide paraeducators with devices, and that the money for these devices be included in the budget being presented to the county executive non-transferably for any other purpose. I have spoken to para.
Excuse me. Oh, we need a second.
Oh, sorry. I'm moving right along here. Sorry. I have a second.
Mr. McMillian's a second.
Thank you. Some of the concerns I hear from paraeducators are that they are a critical member of the team. In fact, in the curriculum committee meeting, when we asked about how staffing was done with special education split between teachers and paraeducators, the comment was, they are a critical part of our team. And if they're a critical part of our team, who needs to have access to email, who needs to be able to communicate with the teachers with whom they work, or even documenting information about students, I think it's only reasonable that we would provide them with some type of device. And the financial impact, as you heard us discuss earlier, could be anywhere from 330,000 to 1.5 million, depending on the level where the paraeducator is and what type of device they're provided with.
Board members, is there discussion around this motion that has a second? Ms. Joz?
Mrs. Saris, can you explain what that entails, that motion? Because I know that these very same board members are trying to cut down devices, so now we have 1.5 million in devices going out, and where is that money coming from?
The money will be included in our request for local county funds. As of now, we have a pretty good estimate of our state funding for next year. So, any additions that are made tonight will, will move the request from Baltimore County government that much more over maintenance of effort.
Board members, questions or comments? Can you restate your motion, and then we're going to take a vote.
I move that in the proposed budget for FY 2021, that BCPs provide paraeducators with devices, and that the money be included in the budget being presented to the county executive non-transferably for any other purpose.
All in favor, raise your hand.
Can I just? I'm sorry. Do this.
Yes, Mr. Newsbaum?
The non-transferable part of the motion is not.
I just need to make sure that everybody understands that that's not binding on the county. In other words, once it goes over to the county.
What would you suggest in terms of prioritizing?
I would, I would leave that language out, I think, and just have it be.
I will restate it. BCPs provide paraeducators with devices. Just that BCPs provide paraeducators with devices.
We'll need the second to agree to the change in the motion. Mr. McMillian?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. All in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed? Any abstain? The motion carries. Okay. Ms. Scott?
I have finally one more.
Oh, okay.
I move that in the proposed budget for FY 2021, that BCPs terminate the Innovative Learning Contract, ARA 210-19, for Culturegram, SERZ Discover, and SERZ Issues Researcher, which has a collective contract spending authority of 300,000, because from July 1st, 2019, through July 14th, 2020, all three products had only 464 views, which equates to a per-view cost of $107.
Is there a second?
Second.
Just that terminating a contract saves 168,317. Board members, discussion? Ms. Joz?
Mr. Saris, how do you just terminate a contract? Are we in the middle of a contract? What are the terms of this contract? And if you could explain more about what this contract entails?
Well, most contracts can be terminated for convenience. I don't know the specific details of this contract. For instance, I don't know if we just renewed, or if it comes up for renewal, let's say, in April. If we can terminate it, even though we've paid a year's worth of dues, will we get that back, et cetera? So, I'll have to, but any contract can be terminated. I just don't know, I can't give you the fiscal impact or the user impact right now.
And what does it do academically? Maybe Dr. McComas can answer this. What are the software?
Ms. Joz, in the interest of time, this was discussed earlier when Ms. Mack asked questions. So, this, this was discussed in detail.
No.
Okay. Ms. Rowe?
Mr. Saris, I believe I've heard you say in the past at building contracts meetings and other things, that if a particular thing isn't funded in the budget, then the contracts have contingencies, that if something doesn't have funding, that the contract is no longer valid. So, if Ms. Mack's motion doesn't provide funding for the contracts, should we have any problem getting out of them?
There is a non-appropriation clause in every contract as well, but we are working under the premise that county government is the appropriating authority. But I'm sure if the county adopts the intent and of the motion, that that will be theirs to resolve. Yes.
Board members, Mr. Kuhn?
Just, Ms. Mack, just so that I'm clear, are you talking about terminating the contract immediately, or for the fiscal year we're talking about?
Fiscal year.
Okay.
Well, for September, that we would not have it available in September.
So, there's no immediate impact now? It's, it's for the fiscal year we're discussing? All right. Thank you.
Other questions or comments, Ms. Scott?
Yes, I'm not really clear. What, what is it? I'm, I'm not really clear, I guess, on, on what it is. I know it was discussed earlier, but it's been a lot of discussion between now and then, so could there be a brief?
It's database lookups. So, students look up animals and places.
So, that's what Lisa was asking about earlier with the $207 per view?
Yes.
Yes.
That was the exact thing.
Okay. And so, what you're saying is, is to terminate that for the coming September?
Yes.
Would there be something that you suggest to go in its place? Or what would, like, if we terminated, what would go there?
I would just suggest the fact that we have 115,000 students, and it's only been viewed 464 times, that students are finding someplace else to find the information.
But who are those students viewing it? Are these special needs students? Are these e-learning students?
Mr., excuse me, Dr. Williams would like to respond.
Oh, thank you, Dr. Williams.
There were a lot of questions earlier. I think the team can go back and look at the ramifications. You know, even though Ms. Mack said September, we just need to look at that contract and see what the actual date is, and to give you more specificity around this. But we will add this to the list in term, if it moves on, we will add this to the list to provide more information.
Board members, any other questions or comments? All in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed? Abstain? The motion carries. Mr. McMillian?
I move that, I move that all 24 Baltimore County Public School, High School Athletic Directors currently working 10 months be increased to 12-month employment and continue to receive their extended day assignment stipends for the, for each of the three sporting seasons.
Second? I'm the second.
Now, speak on it?
Please speak to your motion.
Between June 18th and November 30th, 2018, we lost 10 out of the 24 athletic directors for a number of different reasons. That's 42%. This is a hard job to fill. This is a boots-on-the-ground, frontline position that deals directly with the community. To me, they're the most, most visible person representing our schools and the community. They deal with thousands of student athletes and tens of thousands of spectators. They're overworked, undervalued, and underpaid. Thank you.
Board members, other questions, comments? Mr. Kuhn?
So, what's the actual impact of moving them to 12 months, giving them?
I've seen the figure of $137,000. I don't know. I don't know how accurate that is. A key part of this is subtracting out the 20 EYE days they currently get over the summer. So they're 10-month employees. They get 20 EYE days. This would shift them to 12-month employees, and the 12-month would go, if I'm not mistaken, toward their retirement.
Mr. Saris, can you confirm that?
That number is our estimate, yes. And the issues, of course, about class load and so forth, union membership will have to be addressed. But financially, we can account for that and put it in the budget.
Board members, any other questions or comments? All in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Who's up? Ms. Hen?
Thank you. I move to amend the proposed budget by redirecting 10% of funds currently budgeted for digital subscriptions and software license fees, approximately $262,119, to magnet programs.
Sarah, second? Thank you, Ms. Rowe. Would you like to speak to your motion?
Sure. There's opportunity here not to eliminate usage of these tools, for instance. But we have-- We can leverage our buying power as a large district to renegotiate these contracts. Several of these are coming up for renewal. And the value, $262,119, is-- Again, that's only 10% of the 2-- Over 2.6 million that we spend on these tools. We can renegotiate that. And that $262,000 means a lot more to our magnet programs, which are in dire needs. This budget does increase the resources for our magnet programs, which I greatly appreciate. However, this is an opportunity that we can do more by renegotiating our contracts with these software vendors. So I see that this is an opportunity to directly help these students.
Board members, comments, questions? Mr. Kuhn?
Just a quick question. So the motion that just prior to Mr. McMillian's motion that dealt with ending a specific software contract, does that impact the dollar amount that you're proposing? I mean, 10% is 10%, and that's fine. But is it going to have a direct impact on what you're talking about?
This dollar amount actually may increase. I believe there are more contracts that may not be included here, so it might be slightly higher. There's some questions I had that the team's responding to. But this is an approximation.
All right, thank you.
Sure.
Ms. Scott?
Just for clarification. So what you're saying is to review these contracts and renegotiate them? Or you're saying to end them and then start new contracts?
To look at our pricing for these. As contracts come up for renewal, we have an opportunity to negotiate the pricing. And because we are a large district, we can negotiate-- Our IT department does a great job in negotiating amazing volume discount pricing.
So aren't we doing that anyways? How-- I guess what I'm trying to understand is, how does your motion change?
At the time of contract renewal, we are in a unique position to renegotiate pricing with software vendors. So 10% is not an unusual discount to requests of software vendors. And even if we were to negotiate that on a small fraction of contracts or a larger negotiation, 25%--
So we're not getting 10% right now?
We may be. What I'm saying is there's an opportunity to leverage any savings from price negotiations or discontinuation. I'm not prescribing how to cut that 10%. If there are tools that we're not using, we could realize that 10% through other means. My motion is not prescriptive.
What is your-- Maybe I need you to repeat your motion, just to distill it down. Maybe I didn't quite get it.
I move to amend the proposed budget by redirecting 10% of funds currently budgeted for digital subscriptions and software license fees, approximately $262,119, to magnet programs.
Okay, so you want to redirect that money, end those contracts, and then go after new contracts?
No. I'm proposing to redirect the funds to our magnet program budget.
And then what would happen to the digital programs or where it's going right now? What would we do with the-- Where the money's going right now? The programs that it's going to right now? What would happen?
We're paying-- My motion proposes that we pay less for those or reduce our usage.
Pay for less and reduce our usage, okay. And then what impact would that have? If we were to-- I understand paying less would save us money, but to reduce the usage, what impact would that have to the programs that are currently benefiting from that usage? Like reduce it by 10%? 50%?
This is a question about funds. So reducing what we're paying.
Okay. I was just following up because you said "usage." All right.
So just a point of clarity. We are actually-- That sounds like a reduction to redirect. So we're taking away from one to add to the magnet program. So I just want to make sure it's clear. It's 10%. But you gave a figure. The ultimate goal is to get to that figure of $262,119?
Yes.
Is that what you're saying? Okay.
Ms. Pastor, and then Ms. Joz?
Okay. Just based on the question that Dr. Williams asked, you're trying to get it down to a number? Or which part is the point? The amount or where it's going?
The motion is to reduce the amount by 10%. And the exact figure I would rely on Mr. Tantliff and Mr. Saris to provide. That's an approximation.
I'm sorry, I missed that. I was having a microphone moment.
Sure. My motion is to redirect 10% of funds currently budgeted for digital subscriptions and software license fees. And I would rely on Mr. Saris and Mr. Tantliff to provide that exact number. That the $262,000 is an approximation to provide you for fiscal impact purposes.
But you don't want to take it out of the budget? You just want it redirected?
Redirected to magnet programs, correct.
All right. Is that-- Isn't that something-- Help me with this. I guess where I'm stuck is if the money is in and we're moving it forward with the money, isn't that something in terms of a discussion later or whatever? I'm just trying to figure out why this-- It doesn't change the budget. Is that right?
No. It's a net neutral impact on the budget. It's changing the bucket.
Where?
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Ms. Joz?
So is it taking away resources from regular schools to magnet schools, redirecting 10% of what would have gone to a regular school to a magnet program?
No.
And don't the magnet programs already have resources right now? Because-- And Dr. McComas, if you could answer this. I'm still not very clear on what her motion is.
So my understanding is, first, what we already have proposed in the budget does bring magnet funding up to its highest level as earmarked in 2016. And I believe if Mr. Saris-- I believe I'm saying that correctly. Thank you. So what we already proposed brings up the level of magnet funding directly to schools that principals will have at their access. That's separate from what I understand Ms. Hen's proposing. She's proposing that as we renegotiate contracts that are digital resources and they come in at a lower rate or a lower charge because of the fundamental supply and demand-- Digital resources do come down in pricing-- that the difference that-- With that cost avoidance, then, can be redirected to support magnet programs, is what I understand you're saying. We would be redirecting those resources to support instructional programming as cost avoidance occurs.
So that's a hypothetical situation? That is, if the vendor agrees to give you a 10% discount, or he may not, or give you a 5%?
Correct.
So it's just a hypothetical, then?
Correct.
All right, thank you.
I guess we all must be tired. I think what I keep hearing is that the motion was to redirect whatever we have in digital subscription and licensing to then go to the magnet program, whether it's up for renewal or not. The goal was 10% and you gave an amount, but now it's-- That was the approximate. So it's actually reducing whether it's-- We're renewing or not. You want us to reduce so that funds will go to magnet program?
That is correct.
Okay, all right.
And I had a question. Thank you. I had a question, Dr. McComas. When you just stated that the increase in the budget, which we saw and I think is wonderful, to the magnet program levels to 2016, is that total? That's not a per-pupil allocation? Because we have rising number of students in our magnet programs, right? So you're increasing the total, not the per-pupil?
No, the total that a school gets is based on the per-pupil. So I, as a magnet principal of a magnet program, as my enrollment in that program goes up, my per-pupil allocation goes up as well.
Okay, so the increase that's shown in the operating budget is--
The rate of per-pupil.
The rate of per-pupil. So if we're restoring it to the 2016 level, we're restoring it to the per-pupil level at 2016?
Yes.
Do you know what it was in, say, 2014?
I don't have that number right in front of me.
Okay.
But I believe 2016 was the high point. So, for instance, high schools will go from 225 to 250 per pupil.
Okay. Thank you.
Board members, other questions or comments? So we'll vote. All in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed? The motion carries. Oh, who's abstaining? The motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. Mine-- I have other motions. Should I continue?
Oh, okay. Yep.
Okay. I move to amend the proposed budget by increasing the proposed magnet office budget by $387,000 to restore its funding to FY '19 levels.
Is there a second? Can you speak to your motion? Because based on what Dr. McComas just said--
Yes. So the current magnet office funds have not been restored in terms of the central office. The FY '19 levels were 387-- I'm trying to locate the page. My motion speaks to that reduction and restores the magnet office budget by $387,000 to restore funding to the FY '19 levels, based on the actuals.
Questions?
So--
Mr. Kuhn?
Do we know what those funds were for in the central office? I'm guessing bodies? Were they for directors and folks like that?
Yeah.
They were--
Embryali with answers. They're in bubbles over his head. So maybe if he had a microphone, we could--
So magnet funding-- Central office funding, just as any of the resources in CNI, are actually used to provide materials and resources for schools. And so if we are-- I'll use an example Mr. Embryali and I were discussing the other day. When he was principal of Patapsco High School, I believe his music program needed to replace half of the piano-- Am I saying this right? Piano equipment. And so he, as a principal, communicated with the magnet office, and the magnet office covered the replenishment or the replacement of that equipment. So that's how the magnet office resources are ultimately pushed back into schools in the form of materials and resources. If there is a space that needs some modification to support the educational program of that magnet, that's what those resources are used for.
Sure. And may I speak to that, Madam Chair?
Certainly.
Okay, so some actuals for you, Mr. Kuhn and others that are interested. The FY '19 actuals were $952,874. The FY '20 adjusted budget is $558,751. Those differences occurred in contracted services and supplies and materials. Contracted services, the actuals in '19, were $228,224, budgeted to $56,000. Supplies and materials, actuals were $171,262. Budget was $20,800. So my motion increases the FY '21 proposed by $387,000, which restores the magnet office budget to FY '19 levels, to be able to support our school magnet programs.
Just so I'm--
Mr. Kuhn?
Just so I'm clear. The magnet programs being increased by $680-some thousand, we just passed a motion to add another $262,000. And now we want to add 300 and-- How much?
So my prior motion was for $262,000--
No, no, what's this motion for?
--directly to schools.
To schools.
Yes. This is for the central office magnet office--
All right, thank you.
--for $387,000.
Thank you.
Can I ask you-- Ms. Hen and maybe staff can support this. We are trying to increase access and opportunity in equitable fashion across the county so that more students have access, especially related to CTE, where we know that more students, in terms of workforce development, that there are jobs that are available, that there are options to everyone going to college right away. So is the intent with putting these resources back in the central office, is there-- Would that be the intent, to increase the access and opportunity across the county?
Yes, it is. One of the department objectives, as stated in the budget book in its page 263, is to ensure equity of access to magnet programs for all students and to ensure county-wide implementation of BCPs policies, rules, and admission procedures for magnet programs. So again, to ensure equitable access countywide for all students. And that is something that we've heard is a need. And that is something that we've heard is a need. And as we expand our Magnet programs, that need will be greater, and we will need the resources within the Central Office to be able to support the Magnet expansions that this budget does provide for.
Ms. Rowe?
So I just wanted to clarify something that I only recently learned, is that those Magnet Office budgets, it's my understanding, sometimes will supplement when Magnet programs have some kind of an emergency, or they fall short of funding for some unpredictable reason. And so I don't think that, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think that saying, in this particular case, that that money in the Central Office, it doesn't really stay in the Central Office. It gets redirected to the schools, in addition to whatever the school-based funding is, based on some particular need. So like, for instance, if you don't have lighting the day before a concert, and you decide to get the lighting repaired, and the money has to be found in the budget, the Magnet Office might have that money so that your school arts program doesn't then become obliterated for the rest of the year, is one example.
Are there other questions or comments? Ms. Pester, you've already spoken. Ms. Pester?
I would just like Dr. McComas to speak to, or Mr. Embry Ali to speak to Ms. Rowe's comment. I just, I just need to know that this money goes beyond, as much as I love the arts, the arts, and that it really gets filtered to CTE and all of those other places for which I have a passion.
So yes, and I will also say that, keep in mind that CTE, while it co-mingles with Magnet, CTE is also a stand-aside programming as well. And I just would like to say, before I hand it to Mr. Embry Ali, if he has any further details, keep in mind that while absolutely our long-term goal is to provide full equitable access in the different regions around our Magnet programs, we proceed cautiously with expanding Magnet because it also has transportation implications. And as we all know, we are sensitive to the demands already on my friend and Air Transportation Office, who I love dearly.
And I would add to that oftentimes unique staffing implications. I just want to mention that the per pupil allocation for Magnet programs for elementary, middle, and high school comes out of the central amount that's given to the Magnet Office. So the Magnet Office receives the money through a central fund, and then distributes that money to each of the Magnet schools, based on the per pupil allocation. And then, the remaining amount of money is, as Ms. Rowe mentioned, used to provide supports when those Magnet schools and those programs need it, because those programs are defined as unique and distinct in terms of the programs they're offering. So we need to make sure that we're providing the resources necessary if there is a problem that occurs or a challenge that occurs for a particular building. Lighting was a great example.
I'm only working on two digits now, so... Since, and I wanted you to say that, because very often we just lump CTE into Magnet. So we, I need everybody to just extract that from their thinking. So the 300-and-some thousand dollars, where is that going now? I probably should know that, but I might have known it this morning, but I don't know it again. Where is it going that was taken out, that the motion wants to put back? What do we, what's going on? What's happening with it? I can't even tell. Repeat it, isn't it to put money back?
Yes.
In? So if it's being put back in, it was taken out to go somewhere, right? Or is it because it's almost 12 o'clock?
It's just an ad.
I just need to know, where is it?
It's just an ad.
What?
At this point, it's just an ad, right?
It's just an increase in the budget, but no, because we've added things, and there were things that were added as well. So that 300-and-some went somewhere, even if you can't put your finger right on it, but it's money that's in a pot that we use, it's not ethereal, it's real. All right, so I'll just withdraw it.
Board member, any other discussion? All in favor of Ms. Hen's motion, please raise your hand. Any opposed? Any abstain? Motion carries. Ms. Scott?
I'd like to make a motion.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want me to come back to the rest of mine? Okay.
So this is a little different. I move that in the proposed budget fiscal year '21, that in the interest of allowing and encouraging more parents to attend board meetings, that I move that the Board of Education, Baltimore County, provide childcare to parents attending board meetings during the first regularly scheduled board meeting of each month, starting in July, on a first-come, first-served basis, for children ages two years and older.
Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Scott, would you speak to your motion?
Yes, I would. There's precedents for this, or other boards that offer childcare, drop-in services. The staff has been wonderful to send me information on how something like that could happen, and the feasibility of it, and the parameters around it. We offer it when we have community meetings, we offer it when the superintendent goes out and meets various places, and I'm thinking it would be something that maybe we could look at for maybe a year, 12-month period, to see if that is something that our parents could make use of, and would feel comfortable in doing so, and encourage more attendance at board meetings, and allowing parents to come and speak and participate.
Thank you. Questions? Ms. Rowe, and then Mr. Offerman?
So are you suggesting this is a pilot, and do you know what the fiscal impact of that is?
I don't believe it's been done here before. I checked with the staff, and correct me if I'm wrong, if there has been childcare that was offered previously, if not, then it would be a pilot. And the fiscal impact, as I see it, this was sent to us in our weekly updates, if we were to do every board meeting, I had said 12, so doing one meeting a month, it would be roughly around, looks like 25,000. And there is... Sorry? Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were talking to me. Yeah, so, and basically, starting during the open session, and, but yeah, that's roughly the estimates that they gave for right now, as opposed to what the fiscal impact would be.
Ms. Jones?
So that is $25,000 a year, is that correct?
Yes, for 12-month period.
And so it would be one board meeting, and it would start around six, just before public session, and then end around seven?
That's what I was thinking, yes. About an hour.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? All in favor? Oh, Ms. Pester?
Do we need a contract for that?
Yes, it looks like there, it would be, there would be a contract. It says, looks like they would review contracts and also review existing space, and where it would be available. So it says that we would have options of negotiating for specialized contracted services.
This is from whom? Which staff? Offer, that's, okay. I was just wondering who the "they," okay? And one part, you wrote, raised your hand.
Yeah, we made some estimates, and the way the motion's structured will significantly lower the cost from the estimate, and the hard part will just be finding a provider, you know, that's convenient, but limiting it to an hour will significantly help.
Saying, considering it's a pilot program, hasn't been done before, and it would be the first time.
Mr. Kuhn?
So, just so we're clear, is the childcare going to be in total of like three hours for the night? Because you'd have to get there, drop the child off, come over, and I don't honestly know where the plan is to do it, so I don't know if it's actually in this building on site.
This building is probably not, does not comply with the facilities that the state will require in terms of lavatories and so forth. Closest one I could come up with was West Towson, assuming that the pre-K facility might be available. There are a couple of other, we could only identify a few drop-in providers in the county that are not really close to us, so we're going, we would approach as many as we could find, and see what their capacity is.
And just to finish out, what is the age range you're talking about?
They said we could do it as young as two, ages two and up.
Do we want to limit, limit that? I said, would we want to limit it? Because kids of certain ages have come to our meetings and sat quietly, or said the pledge, or whatever. I'm curious, but do we want to like really narrow it, so that...
Well, we couldn't take babies, so it would have to be a...
Two and up, like up to, up to what?
But you're saying limiting it as far as...
Like not up to 18, like up to like...
Not to 18. Um, there wasn't a cap, that was put...
I'm just curious, because...
I would say probably 10, but again, that's where I would defer to the school system, you're the experts in that, as far as what the age range would be, and how that would play out. But yeah, I'm assuming we wouldn't take 18, 16, 17-year-old high school students.
No, that would keep Ralph busy.
You're right.
Any other discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. That motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Scott. Ms. Rowe?
So I have a motion. I move that BCPS add 15 million to this budget to provide the school system with funding flexibility to negotiate with bargaining units for adding 15 minutes to the school day.
Second.
So the purpose for this motion is, because we heard that if it's not in the budget, it can't be negotiated, so in the interest of furthering potential negotiations for that 15 minutes, apparently, we need to add it in the budget.
Questions and comments?
I'm just asking, I heard your mention, clearly, this is not tied to planning time specifically, correct?
No, it's just putting 15 million dollars in the budget to allow the school system to have that 15 million dollars as a tool to negotiate with the bargaining units, to see whatever they can come up with up to that amount, to add 15 minutes to the school day. Or, you know, five, or 10, or whatever we can get out of that. Because the state has wanted us to add that 15 minutes, and our school day is shorter. Whether that involves planning time or anything else, I'll leave that to the negotiating teams.
Mr. Offerman?
Yeah, I'm wondering, when the state asks us to add the 15 minutes, the state, my understanding is that has to do with the high school time. Is that, is that correct?
That's primarily where we run into constraints with the state requirements, yeah.
So, and maybe this is the wrong time to bring this up, you know, is it potentially, is it possible to add 15 minutes to the high school day, and not to the elementary or the middle day? It's just in terms of cost-saving.
It's tough, because we have to treat all TABCO members equally, and we have to coordinate, we have the transportation schedules, and so forth.
Mr. Kuhn, and then Mr. McMillian?
So Mr. Saris, if we were talking about 15 minutes, adding 15 minutes across the entire enterprise, how much money would that be?
So our calculation was 26.8 million dollars, based on, I think it was current staffing levels, and not the, any additional positions that we've proposed in the budget, is that correct? Yeah.
Next year's compensation.
Right.
All right, thanks.
Mr. McMillian?
So if it's 26.8 million dollars at current staffing, how does the 15 million dollars play into this?
My thought was that right now, we have nothing in the budget to negotiate for any additional time, and therefore, it can't be negotiated, because any budget that passes won't have any money passed for negotiation. And I would think that a creative group of people could take 15 million dollars and negotiate something, whether it's, there's other things bargaining units want besides money. And if we put some money in the pot for there to be some negotiation, maybe bargaining units would want to find a way to get that 15 million dollars, as opposed to not adding any additional time to the day, and the school system giving that 15 million dollars to the county. So if there's, you know, a carrot to chase after, maybe it will strengthen the position of adding those 15 minutes. And we know the county didn't want to give us the 27 million last time, so maybe they'll go for a lower amount.
Ms. Hen?
Ms. Rowe, would you please restate your motion? I'm interested in the 15-minute clause.
I move that BCPS add 15 million dollars to this budget to provide the school system with funding flexibility to negotiate with bargaining units for adding 15 minutes to the school day.
Ms. Hen?
Would you accept an amendment to modify the 15 minutes to read an extended school day, so that it's not specific, or...
Yes, I'll accept that.
Thank you. I seconded that.
Do you accept that?
I'm not sure that I do. What we, the 15 minutes comes very specifically from the fact that that would get Baltimore County Public Schools to the state average. So we have the shortest day by 15 minutes, and so what we're trying to achieve is to allow our teachers to have the same time as teachers in other districts, our students to have the same time that they have in other districts throughout the state of Maryland, in order to achieve a program of academic excellence. And so...
So what you're suggesting is that we either get the whole 15 minutes in one year, or we take nothing. I think any step in a direction of added time is better than nothing. So if we leave it open-ended, maybe we can negotiate for the whole 15, or maybe we can negotiate for five, or the negotiating parties end up at a stalemate, and nobody gets anything. I don't know, I'm just trying to put something in there to negotiate with.
I would support between 10 and 15. I mean, I think if we're going to ask the school system to make this change, it needs to be worthwhile, because there are logistical issues, tremendous logistical issues.
So adding between 10 and 15 minutes to the school day, I think that's fair, because I think five minutes isn't worth 15 million dollars.
That's correct.
Between 10 and 15, okay. So I'm changing the motion to, "BCPS add 15 million dollars to this budget to provide the school system with funding flexibility to negotiate with bargaining units for adding between 10 and 15 minutes to the school day."
I'll support the second. Mr. McMillian?
The piece I don't understand, if they project 26.8 million dollars for 15 minutes, and I understand that you want something in the pot, you know, the 15 million dollars, but if those people are representing me, and I paying their union dues, I'm not, I'm not going to like the fact that, that they're compromising half of that. I can't see that, I can't see that working.
So we've heard different, many, 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 I mean, I can't go into the details in open session, but we've heard many, many different types of things offered. Some of it involves, the estimate that was that 26 million involved just money compensation in last year's budget, but there are other things bargaining units want. Planning time, as we've heard them talk about.
We need to be mindful of...
Okay. Well, I mean, this is what they say when they sit here, so, but there are other things they want, and they may be willing to negotiate for some of that, or not, and then, in which case, then not.
So you're not, you're just not focusing on the 10 to 12 minutes, or 10 to 15 minutes, you're looking at other things?
I'm suggesting that without money in the factor, that there's not a lot to work with. So by putting money in the budget, it gives the negotiating parties something to work with that they don't currently have in the budget. And I think that without any money, we're not going to get any movement on 15 minutes. And if it's not in the budget, then it can't be negotiated. And right now, there's no money for that 15 minutes or added time of the day.
So this is a proposed budget that the county would have to approve? And I think I'm associating myself with Mr. McMillian around the 15 million dollars. That's causing some anxiety on this end, because the 15 minutes, we would have to plan, and we would have to plan like now, to start for September, whatever that date is. So I don't know if it's best to say, just add 15 minutes without the 15 million dollars. I'm not quite understanding, because of the proposed process and the planning that's going to happen, not, there's the negotiation piece, and just, I just want to bring to your attention, Ms. Mack, and we supported about the 2% colas and the bonuses, so...
Are you suggesting...
I need clarity on this last one, and I think what I'm seeking is, if it's about the 15 minutes, if we get that agreement, as a system, we have to revamp so many things associated with adding additional minutes to a schedule.
Well, I think I'm unwilling to suggest that we should add 15 minutes without compensating teachers and staff anything.
So what I'm hearing Dr. Williams say is that there's two issues. One is if the board decides that we want to add 15 minutes to the day, then we say that and approve that, and then the school system and the bargaining units will have to work it out. If we tie it directly to getting funding, then we won't know until the end of May whether the funding comes. And so then Dr. Williams will have the choice of planning something that may not happen, or being caught at the end of May, having to plan for something that is going to happen system-wide. Is that a fair analysis?
Yes, but I'm, you know, again, like Dr. McConus, we've been up since 4:30 in the morning, so maybe I'm just not comprehending the motion.
From my understanding of this issue...
Well, it is something that could be divided.
I guess I just don't know...
Could be separated, because...
We could do that? We could do that? I mean, could we say that we want 15 minutes added to the day, period, start doing it with no money in any budget to do it? I thought the budget process came first.
Let's, let's think about that for a minute. Ms. Pester.
Because you can't, we can't just add, schools can't just tomorrow or next month or whatever, just add 15 minutes. So, it takes planning, it takes time, it takes a lot of things.
So, I guess the question is, is the, you know, the board has talked about the 15 minutes and we've heard TABCO talk about planning time and all of the needs of our staff. So, how does it happen? How do we make progress in this area if we are always in the, in the stage of waiting for the approval of the money, but then that's always at the end unless we come up with a statement that we are going to add 15 minutes to the next cycle and that somehow those finances need to be baked in from the very beginning of the operating budget? Then that would give the opportunity for the school system to plan and it would also give an opportunity for additional negotiations in the next cycle. But I'm just throwing that out there as discussion, I'm not modifying the motion.
The next cycle won't be a bargaining unit year and if previous years, we were told we couldn't do the 15 minutes because it wasn't a bargaining year. This is the year, the school system told us we could do this.
That's a good point. Mr. Kuhn.
So, since negotiations are ongoing, do we table this idea and ask the superintendent to focus on more time?
Well, didn't we just hear that if it's not in the budget proposal, we can't negotiate it? And there's no money in the budget proposal for 15-minute school day right now. So, it seems like we're being caught up in a chicken or the egg thing. The board, I think, I want to, I've heard other members say they want to pursue this state request that's been ongoing for multiple years to add 15 minutes to the school day. Since I've been on the board, I've been looking for ways to do this and every time we come up with a way to do it, first we're told it's not a bargaining unit year and it has to be negotiated, then we're told this or that, then we're told, so, and now we're being told, oh, it doesn't matter if it's not a bargaining unit year, let's just, you know... Someone tell me what the board needs to do to get this 15 minutes both funded and bargaining unit negotiated and done.
Mr. Kuhn.
So, I would suggest we just added $17 million with a 2% increase. So, perhaps there can be some negotiation around that. That's all, I'll say.
I'm sorry, Mr. Kuhn, could you repeat what you said?
So, in a previous motion, we, we increased the budget by $17 million to give everyone the 2% COLA adjustment. That's, that's what I'm saying. So, there's a lot of money there.
Okay, point taken. Mr. Burke.
Mrs. Cozy.
Would you mind using a microphone, please? Thank you, Mr. Burke.
In my understanding, whether or not it's budgeted in the, in this proposal or whether the compensation occurs in some other way besides monetary award, it has to be negotiated with the bargaining unit. And so, my concern is you might make a decision to make that increase without having it approved by the bargaining unit and then I don't know what that means. I just wanted to put that out there.
Okay, so what would it take for our, for our negotiating team and our bargaining unit to come up with a solution in 10 days and then we can table this motion until our February 25 meeting?
Mr. Saris.
The 10-day time period creates a, an issue because we won't know in, in that period of time if county government is really going to fund any or all of this proposal. So, we're kind of negotiating on a contingency basis that if it's funded, that we can try to reach an agreement. So, it'll, it won't be, it will be difficult for Dr. Williams to then start planning just based on a contingent, you know, or tentative agreement.
In a way, our whole operating budget is contingent.
True. We know we're getting maintenance of effort.
Right. So...
That's true.
I think, well, in the interest of time, if we don't have a conclusion to this, I would like the board to maybe think about a process that the board would approve to try and make progress on this before the next meeting.
We do have to dispose of the motion.
Yes, can we table the motion?
Can we postpone?
Can we postpone it till the end of the meeting to see if anyone else has anything else to address? Can we postpone it till other motions are considered?
I'll second the postponement.
Okay, thank you. Board members, are there other questions or comments or motions? Ms. Hen and I have one motion. So, I have a question that may lead to a motion, if I may, Mr. Saris and Mr. Tantla.
I'll give it a try.
Okay. So, it has to do with the, the Office of ESAL. Dr. McConus? So, there was an increase, I know, to, for the salary of one new position for $101,000, I believe, for the bilingual communications coordinator in the Office of ESAL. There was also an increase of approximately $350,000 and I wasn't sure what that increase was to be used for, for FY '21. So, that was my question. And then I have a motion depending on, I may have a motion depending on the answer to that. I'm working on getting the page. I've been flipping back and forth.
Possibly 227?
Yes, possibly. Salaries and wages increased from 478,209 to 954,365. And I know that 101,000 of that increase is for the bilingual communication officer and I'm wondering what the difference is for in that office? If that's a school, that wouldn't be for school-based positions, would it, for ESAL teachers? Does anyone know?
So, the bilingual communication officer, even though it says ESAL office, is going into the community engagement and communications. I think we talked about that in the budget preparation. It says from the ESAL office, but we were adding a bilingual communication officer.
Okay, so even if, though it's in the budget book under the ESAL office budget?
Correct.
It's going into the communications?
It's going into the communication office.
Okay, so that leads me to ask then what the 400, I can't do the math in my head.
Ms. Hen, one chunk of it, I'll have to find the exact amount, but a chunk of money moved from contracted services to contract employees. So, it just moved from one line to the other, that's why the salaries, that's one of the items pushing the salaries up on that page. You can see contracted services are dropping by 300,000.
Right.
It moved into salaries.
The 285,000 difference moved into salaries and wages?
Yes, that plus the new position and COLAs account for everything.
So, so that still leaves quite a significant number. Minus 478. Bear with me one second. So, 191,365, so I guess it's just 90,000 increase in salaries and wages. So, that's probably COLAs and STEPS then, Mr. Tantla?
Um, most likely. That COLAs and STEPS in that budget are probably about 50,000.
Okay. Okay, then I don't need to, to make that motion then, thank you. Then my next motion is I move to amend the budget for fiscal year 2021 by redirecting 120,000 from network support services, contracted services, to internal audit for the creation of one professional FTE, for the creation of an IT auditor position reporting to the board.
Is there a second?
Second.
I'll have Mr. Kuhn second that. Please speak to your motion.
Thank you. With the, the volume and the complexity of projects that our, our IT shop handles and they're, they're doing a fantastic job, there's considerable risk and with the increasing complexity of security concerns, this board has responsibility and, and needs greater resources to ensure that security controls are present, reporting to the board with this, this responsibility. And this is a need that we currently don't have the resources within our internal audit group to provide. This represents a small fraction of the current contracted services budgeted amount within network support services. The budget reflects an increase overall in this department of 9 million in network projects and with that amount of projects coming through this group, it does require a higher level of oversight. So, this position would be responsible for providing that oversight, reporting directly to the board on the status of that project as well as on the security controls as an independent oversight position residing within the internal audit group and reporting to the audit committee.
Ms. Scott?
Yes, you said this would be an independent oversight position reporting to the audit committee? Would that position not report back to the full board?
Yes, the board's audit committee and then through, to the full board.
So, they would report to the audit committee first and then the audit committee would report to the board or?
Well, the audit committee meets with the internal audit group, that's...
So, this position would be a full-time staff person?
Correct.
And they would report to the audit committee, which is comprised of members of the board?
Yes.
Okay, as opposed to reporting to the board?
Well, and that's how it reports to the board. So, I'm on the audit committee, so we have the audit committee meetings, staff shares with us what they're doing and then when it's finalized, whatever the reports are, then those are shared with the full board.
Isn't the Office of Audits already doing this, though? Are you saying that they need an additional staff person? Are they overwhelmed or it sounds like this could be, there could be some redundancy?
This position would have, this person in this position would have expertise that we currently don't have within the internal audit group, specifically IT expertise to...
So, this would be an IT person or?
IT auditor.
So, this would be an IT auditor and the expertise in there right now is more so accounting or?
Correct.
Okay, so this would be a different type of auditor, an IT auditor as opposed to an accounting auditor?
Yes.
So, then who would supervise, would they, they would be supervised directly by the board?
They would reside within the internal audit group.
So, then who would supervise their work if it's accountant supervising an IT professional?
Our chief internal, chief of internal audit.
Which has a background in accounting?
Auditing.
Auditing, okay.
Mr. Kuhn and then Mr. McMillian.
So, I believe there is a need that this position is targeted towards. I'm not convinced that, that as an organization that we are better off by trying to hire a specialized resource like this and bring them internal. I would think it might make sense to put aside contracting dollars and bring an outside entity out to review in-depth all of what's going on within our IT group here. That's just my comment.
Can staff, I thought I read something in the list of the answers to questions in terms of, thank you, Mr. Corns, in terms of initiatives that you're working on. Is there something in there that already addresses this?
We have proposed to do an in-depth audit with, we'd been asked about penetration testing, but we need to go deeper than that and I'm going to, I don't want to speak to the direct number until I can find him, Mrs. Cozy, but I believe it's a neighborhood of $300,000 that we proposed that has made it into the superintendent's proposed budget to perform an in-depth audit of our IT practices and our security protocols and our firewall configurations and our staff training on response to phishing. So, we, we have this in the plan in our proposed budget.
Okay, and that would be using a, a contract?
Yes.
So, an outside provider?
Yeah, so we would, we would seek an RFP that would spell out what, what exactly we're seeking and bring in an agency ex, from an external source to do an independent evaluation of our practice.
Okay, would it make sense, Ms. Hen, to correlate? Certainly. Sure. So, to speak to that, thank you, Mr. Corns, and thank you, Mr. Kuhn, for your comments.
$379,000 that we proposed on page 206.
So, the one-time audit, and I agree, that's very necessary and very valuable. I don't see the two as mutually exclusive. I think the one-time audit is, is absolutely necessary and valuable and certainly...
Mrs. Hen, as this was...
If I may finish, Mr. Corns?
Sure.
The, the one-time audit is certainly necessary and I would support funding that. And in fact, that was one motion that I considered making in terms of providing the, the funding for that in, in this budget had it not been already included. But it is best practice and this is by no means a sign of a lack of trust by any means. It's a best practice for boards to look for this specialized type of resource in terms of governance, especially in these days with cybersecurity concerns becoming ever more prevalent and the risks growing, this is the type of resource that boards are seeking as an independent resource. So, it's, in no means, I don't want to be misconstrued, the intent of making this motion is more of a governance factor than any, anything else. So, just to make my intentions clear.
So, just so we're, so we're clear, with the budget request we've made, we've asked for $379,000 annually to include, this is, this is an annual cost increase in the IT budget to perform this annual evaluation. So, if that is not the appropriate use of those funds, then we certainly reexamine.
And again, I'll reiterate that I don't see the two as mutually exclusive. The focus of this position, again, in my vision, is not strictly technical in terms of, you mentioned penetrate, penetration testing and more on the technical side. This position would also be responsible for fiscal oversight and looking at controls of that sort as well because that is the board's responsibility. So, in alignment with our questions and, and oversight responsibilities, this would be a resource to us as we look at IT spending. And being on the Building and Contracts Committee, a lot of the contracts we see and percentage of spend have to do with our IT spend. That's a large portion of the system's spend. So this is a resource, I think, will be invaluable to, to the board, not, not from a sheer technical, technical audit perspective, but simply as a resource to the board.
Ms. Mack and then Mr. McMillian.
Since it sounds like there is some type of synergy between what you are describing and what Ms. Hen is describing, I thought initially the 379 was a one-time, but if we can, if we can accomplish the same thing, I think you proposed 120?
Per year.
120 per year, and you're saying 379. In the, being the physically responsible person I am, I'd have to say that it makes more sense to hire somebody at 120 and just have that person pick up the part that you just described there, Mr. Corn.
Would you like to respond to that?
I'm deferring to.
Okay. Mr. Kuhn?
Just to follow, is this 379, when you talk about IT assessment and security services, are you talking about an ongoing security review of everything within the boundary of BCPS? Is that what this is designed for?
So, Mr. Kuhn, our, our plan is, has always been to do a annual audit, but given many of the things that we've heard about in other LEAs and Baltimore City specifically, we've asked for a much more in-depth that has actually increased the cost of what we would normally have paid. So yes, this is, this is our annual review of our practices, our security, our configurations. Are we putting the right things in the right place? Our processes, our disaster recovery, our continuance of operation plan, all those are under this evaluation.
All right, thank you.
Sure.
Mr. McMillian.
Ms. Hen, the position you described, is that within the organizational structure of the internal office, internal audit office?
Internal audit, yes.
So it's not going to be an independent position that sort of floats out there by itself?
Correct.
And who would interview and hire for this position?
The chief of internal audit.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Mr. Kuhn?
All right, well, it's not, it's not for the specific motion, so I'll pass, never mind.
Okay. Can you restate your motion, then we're gonna vote?
Sure. I move to amend the proposed budget for fiscal year 2021 by redirecting 120,000 from network support services, contracted services, to internal audit for the creation of one professional FTE for an IT auditor reporting to the board.
All in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? Abstained? The motion fails for lack of a, the motion fails. Shall I continue?
Sure.
Okay.
I move to amend the proposed budget for fiscal year 2021 by increasing technology support services, supplies and materials by 630,000 for the purchase and installation of 14 digital school signs, two per council manic district.
Is there a second? Mr. Kuhn? Please speak to your motion.
Sure. The digital school signs are an effective communication tool for engaging with our families, particularly in schools that have a hard time reaching families that are otherwise not engaged with our schools. I hear from school, I go in schools and hear from them that the signs are a way to reach families who are otherwise not engaged with them. They're on heavily trafficked streets, they, for some, they're eye-catching, they convey information, they attract visitors to the school, they attract community engagement. It's, it's a communications tool that is very effective. Administrators ask PTAs for their support in fundraising to purchase signs. Also, as an issue of equity, imagine yourself as a student and going to your school with a non-digital sign or a broken sign and passing on your way to school a fancy new digital sign. It certainly is an equitable facility issue, and we do have schools that, that are in need of these signs. So while the costs may be prohibitive to replace or install these all in one year, the intent is to be able to install these on a gradual basis, which is what my motion intends to do, and by distributing that resource equitably across the county by dividing these by council manic district.
I have a question for staff. If we have a bilingual communications officer, could we then have these signs provide the school information in multiple languages?
So while I'm not personally familiar with how you program a digital marquee, I don't think that there'd be anything that would prohibit us from doing that.
Because I do, we do hear that we have communities that, that don't go on the website, that, you know, don't feel as connected, and certainly that is a way to extend and include more, more members of community. Ms. Pester, did you have a point? Julie, restate it, or?
Sure.
Excuse me.
I'm.
Dr. Williams was raising his hand.
Yes, so I'm, I'm wondering if it's not the technology, but just looking at ways that we can connect our families and communities. I don't think, so I heard the motion and understand what you said, Ms. Hen, but the piece goes around that families are saying they're not connected or not having information. I don't know if that's the best way of connecting families and communities versus some things that we do differently or built on around family and community partnerships. So I just had to just share that a little bit. I don't think the sign will get us to more parent engagement or knowing what's going on.
Ms. Scott?
Thank you.
And then Ms. Rowe.
How would we decide, or would it be up to the board member to decide which schools, I guess which two schools per district the signs went to?
Sure, so our, our staff know, have a list, have an inventory and know which schools would be in need of those signs, so I would trust staff to make that call.
So staff would, like, if there's like five schools that need it, then staff would determine which of those five?
Sure.
Okay.
And Ms. Pester had asked me to restate my motion, so I will go ahead and do that. I move to amend the proposed budget for fiscal year 2021 by increasing technology support services, supplies and materials by 630,000 for the purchase and installation of 14 digital school signs, two per council manic district. And I will add that this motion does have county council support from two districts, one in the northwest and one in the northeast, as well as possible county executive support.
Ms. Rowe?
So I just want to say that respectfully to the superintendent, I completely disagree that not having a digital sign is impactful for parent support, because there have been schools who have been able to use their digital sign because it rotates different messages to help inform parents about everything in the community, from Amber Alerts to rec council programs that are currently enrolling, to the Easter egg hunt that happens in the community every year, to all sorts of things. And there has been the one-off occasion where I might have missed an event at my own kid's school if it hadn't been for the sign. So, you know, there's a lot of noise out there in the world, and having a sign right in front of the school that people drive by, walk their dog by and everything else, and those messages are easier to change than those stupid flip numbers in the middle of winter, would make information more current for the community.
That's informational, though. What he was talking about is real community and school engagement with parents. Like, that's, that's giving information, but to really engage with parents, a sign is excellent to give out information, to let about upcoming, parents know about upcoming events, but to really engage and connect with parents, it's, it's, the sign is maybe a first step, but it's also a lot more after that. And I think that's all the superintendent was intending.
Okay, thank you. And Ms. Pester?
Okay, are you asking that we just do 14 period, or is this ongoing? I, did you say that?
Sure.
I mean, like, next year, we'll ask for 14 more, so that every school ends up with one?
The intent is for every school to have one. Since we're, since we're amending this annual budget, the scope of the motion is limited to this budget, but that would be my intent, for every school to have one. Yeah.
Okay, any final thoughts before I call the vote? All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Are you finished?
I am not.
You are not, okay.
Okay.
Let me know when you're ready to share the stage.
Okay. My next motion, I move to amend the proposed budget for fiscal year 2021 by increasing the Department of Facilities Management budget by 1.4 million to repair, maintain and resurface, if necessary, seven high school running tracks, one per council manic district.
Second.
Can we let Rod second it? Because he's, he's all things sports, right? Okay.
We will not only let Rod second it, would, Mr. McMillian, would you like to speak to the motion?
It took us 30-some years to get the track repaired at Chesapeake High School. Kenwood's track is in terrible shape. I don't think that they can actually run track events in the spring because of the track. The modern technology, I've observed that they spray through a gunite machine shredded rubber onto the, an asphalt base, and the, the new tracks are superior to what the old asphalt center kind of track was. So that, and as a former athletic director and physical education teacher, there's a real need to resurface tracks around this county.
Any other questions or comments, Ms. Pester?
Okay, you just say all tracks, all schools. What did you say? Seven?
I said.
You said in all areas. Districts, one in each district. Okay, I get it. Thanks, Rod.
Seven, one per district.
Okay. And if a district needs, needs more than one, how do we make that determination?
We include that in next year's budget.
But how do we determine for this fiscal year which one? What do you do, throw the, put the names in that box?
Well, staff would have to.
Staff would advise.
We will let staff do it.
We'll let staff. They'll know which ones are the oldest and which ones are the. Right. And it, right, schools can decide, you get a track or you get a sign? What do you want? Okay. All in favor, please raise your hand. It's unanimous. Thank you. Board members, I have a motion, and I did have copies, but they fell on the floor, I guess. Okay. I move to amend the proposed budget for fiscal year 2021 by increasing the Board of Education salaries and wages budget by 149,000 for the restoration of a 1.0 professional FTE position for an OMS, Ombudsman to respond to BCPS stakeholders.
Second.
Thank you, I have another phrase. I move to amend the proposed budget for fiscal year 2021 by redirecting the vacant chief communications officer position funds to a Board of Education 1.0 professional FTE for a chief of staff supporting the board.
No. Do you combine them second?
And actually, this, the financial impact is potentially neutral, where I had included a budget of 149,000 for the restoration of the 1.0 professional FTE position for an OMS Budsman. In the past, the chief communications officer position, I believe, was around $200,000. So if the chief of staff position is around 100,000 and we can get an OMS Budsman for around 100,000, it would, would actually be budget neutral. But I wanted to put those, that dollar value in there to have as a placeholder. And there's been a second, and so I'll speak to my motion. The Board of Education, well, in my history with the Board of Education, we've had student discipline hearings and things of that nature, where in the past, the OMS Budsman had been able to work out a lot of situations where we didn't have a lot of those appeals and different things going on. So the, the first goal is to, number one, provide our students with the best academic experience and, and to provide the parents a easier way to facilitate that when sometimes things get a bit contentious. So that has happened in the past, and I think board members can understand the amount of emails that we get with concerns and to be able to have a way to coordinate more effectively as a board with the superintendent and his staff to kind of have that direct person-to-person so that it's not 12 people sending a million emails a million different places. The other issue related to chief of staff, when Julie and I became the chair and the vice chair last year, we had a planning session and we had a number of initiatives that we thought would be very helpful in terms of governance and community engagement. And I'll just quickly read the policies, not the, all the policies, but policy 1100, Community Relations, the Board of Education believes engaging parents, community members in business and the educational process plays a key role in student success. Policy 1200, Community Relations, the Board of Education is committed to fostering and supporting community interest and involvement in Baltimore County Public Schools. Policy 1230, Community Relations, Community Involvement, Area Education Advisory Councils. We have our next dinner coming up next week. It's only two per year. There's a lot of engagement that our Area Education Advisory Councils, they want to support and they want to advise and they want to gather community input, and there's really been a bottleneck of opportunity because board members are volunteers. We get 7,500, but we are very engaged and we have one executive assistant who is amazing. Can I, can I get around? But she is one, for 12, with a community of 15, 115,000 students and all those parents and other people. So, and also policy 1210, I can't forget, because she's still here from PTA Council, President Ms. Jane Lee, that community involvement relationship with parent and teacher association. So that is speaking to my motion. Ms. Rowe?
So I don't know, maybe a lot of people aren't aware of this, but it's an odd thing that we no longer have an Ombudsman, because Baltimore County was the first school system in the state to have an Ombudsman, such that every other school system in the state decided to follow our example and have their own Ombudsman. And now the Office of Education Accountability is looking at us like, why'd you get rid of your Ombudsman? What happened here? Because the Ombudsman creates a lot of accountability in the school system, and so I think it's very weird that somehow recently our Ombudsman just disappeared.
Well, I'll just say in general, there was a lot of budget realignment for the STAT program. So when we were paying for laptops, it, it took a lot of money out of a lot of places. And I think that as we're realigning technology with, with the more fiscally sustainable Chromebooks, that now we need to realign, as Dr. Williams says, the schoolhouse and these things that are really going to allow our children to, to improve. Part of that is engagement, part of that is dealing with issues that arise, and part of that is the board being a better governing board. Mr. Saris and then Ms. Pester and then Ms. Scott.
Just to make sure that everybody knows that the Ombudsman herself has not disappeared, she's, she works in the Office of Communications and Community Outreach, so that, that position is actively engaged with stakeholders and, and soliciting community input.
Saying that we could get our Ombudses back as an Ombudsman and some of... in somebody who already knows how to Ombudsman? Because that would be fantastic.
I'm just saying that position does exist.
Yeah, but is it, why is it not called an Ombudsman?
It was restructured and defined that way because it's part of a broader, it used to be a sort of a division, an office of one, and now it's part of a group.
So in all those places where like different state agencies and different things and you call them up on the phone and you say, I have this question and blah, 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 and they say, call your school system's Ombudsman. There is literally, and then you try to find out who BCPS Ombudsman is. There is literally no name that you're ever told. I know what you're talking about, I like her. But what I'm saying is, it would be nice if she had the title that was referred to all over the state as a person's Ombudsman things.
Okay, we need to tighten this up in case anyone hasn't noticed, it's very late. The Ombudsman, which the question I asked and the answer was lovely given in the printed response, was, had specific responsibilities reported to the board. And it was clearly known to the board and to the community what it did. And that's what I am talking about having once again. Our engagement with our communities is only increasing as it should, as is helpful. And this will, this will help. Ms. Scott.
So the Ombudsman, so, so that I understand, the Ombudsman that you're talking about, what is her official title if it's no longer Ombudsman? And it's in the Office of Communications?
I'll get that for you.
Okay. The Ombudsman that Kathleen is proposing, talking about, is an Ombudsman who would report directly to the board. Okay, so in the interest of redundancy, I guess what I'm trying to understand is, the job duty that the Ombudsman does in the Office of Communications, how would that job duty differ for the board? Or would it be the same job, except she would just work directly for the board? Doing the same thing that's already being done for the school system?
If I may.
Yes, thank you.
The position's called Executive Liaison. We expanded it because this person not only deals with calls that come to the board office, but also to the community soup's offices, communications offices, and she handles dozens of calls sometimes in a day. So Ms. Rowe, with all due respect, the term Ombudsman is an old term. We're not really using that anymore. We're trying to broaden the understanding of what that position does. And so I think folks around the state, as you said, will begin to follow suit and change the name from Ombudsman to something similar to what we're doing, community engagement, community partnerships, things like that.
Can you give a job description of what the Ombudsman or the Executive Liaison does? Just right now, just like a overview?
Literally, for example, people come to Greenwood to engage with us. Sometimes they're not always very happy. She's the first person they meet with to try to calm the situation down. She takes phone calls, as I said, from all across the system, from parents who want to talk to someone at Central Office. That's usually the first person they talk to.
Okay.
So she was the Ombudsman for the school board, but we expanded the position so that she would have interaction with various departments and also from the schools.
So she works with the school board and also the school system?
Really, she's, through the Office of the Superintendent, is where her position really lives. But she works with communications and Tracy and Brenda use her as they need to. I would also say that we could utilize Tracy better. So when board members get calls and things, rather than forwarding them to staff or trying to answer yourself, you could use Tracy, utilize her in the same way that we utilize Ombudsman in the past.
Ms. Pastore then Ms. Mack.
While Mr. Dickerson is there, it was my understanding from Mr. Bazemore that in addition to his government thing, he is also constituent services, et cetera. Now, I've been with him where he's gotten calls. He get, and he just, his phone stays lit with people calling him about every issue that, for which we also get emails. Now, how does he fit and all of that fit together?
Great question. Mr. Bazemore deals mostly with issues around legislative affairs or interacting with our county council and elected folks. But anyone who's been with Mr. Bazemore knows that he's got quite a reputation around the county for getting things done. And so, yes, people call Tony when they have questions about which offices to call. Tony and Carol used to work very closely together. She was his backup in Indianapolis. She's no longer doing that. She's doing some work with MSDE. But having said that, yes, Tony also fields questions for stakeholders.
Thank you.
Mack.
Would it make sense just to move her back to the board? I guess I'll direct that to you, Kathleen, because I was, that position did not exist in the year I've been here.
Well, and that's the point. There's, there is increased engagement with our community, as there should be. Board members have increased engagement around the school system. It was a position that worked very effectively, reporting to the board. And this board has not had that in the past year. And I can tell you, from channeling, trying to facilitate and coordinate the work of board members, there is a lot to do. And even now with Tony, who is excellent, and Carol, who's excellent, and Tracy, who is excellent, I don't think any of them have an extra minute. I don't think our, you know, I don't think Ms. Gover has had a spare moment in the next year. So to say we can utilize her, I think is not a fair statement. I think that in order for this board to continue to improve our governance, to improve our accountability to our constituents, because as it is now, we have concerns that we forwarded and we haven't heard back how all of this is getting handled. And maybe it is getting handled, and that's great. But again, there's a piece where the board does not have that position for the community to understand that we are taking our community engagement seriously. We're taking constituent services seriously and that we're really working to improve.
Well, I'm not going to debate whether Ms. Gover is busy or not. I think we all know she is. But I would say that I think the board could do a better job of fielding those calls to Tracy, sending them to Tracy, and letting Tracy send the calls out. I don't think that's happening now. I think Tracy would say that if she were being honest. I'm just saying, if we utilize Tracy to take the calls that you all get and then have Tracy send those out to Ms. Beathoff and the various offices, I think you probably get the same bang you're trying to get out of an Ombudsman position that, I'll say it again, already exists.
Well, actually, excuse me, we just, just to that point, Dr. Williams has requested that the board forward everything to the office. So that's the communication protocol that we're following. And certainly, there's room for improvement. But we can't ask people that are already doing tremendous jobs to do more. And that's part of what we hear from our teachers and from everybody else. We need to be realistic about the work.
Yeah, and I understand that. And also, because we also talk about being fiscally conservative. And so it looks like it's an additional 350, roughly 350,000, 349,000 for, it sounds like a position that may already exist or be redundant. It's no budget impact?
It's potentially no budget impact because we have had a vacant Chief Communications Officer position for two years. It's an FTE that would be reallocated.
Okay. And then my other question is, you said two positions, an Ombudsman. But when was the Ombudsman position no longer existing where the position reported directly to the board? When did that end?
Not in my time, yeah. So in excess of 14 years at least.
14 years ago?
It's all, it's been a superintendent position.
So like, like 2000? Oh, 2013?
The document that's on the, that was returned with the answers had a 2011 description of the Ombudsman reporting to the board.
Okay. Okay, so it was changed around 2011-ish. And so what you're talking about-
2013.
2013, okay, so there's some discrepancy there. So what you're talking about, Kathleen, are two positions? An executive, well, we already have an executive assistant. You're talking about a chief executive officer and-
Staff.
A Chief of Staff that would report directly to the board and then Ombudsman. Who would hire these, interview for these positions? Would these be existing staff members that would be reallocated to the board? Or would we hire? And who would do that hiring? Would it be the board that would interview and hire that position as a whole?
We could do that. We're doing that currently with our ethics review panel.
So I guess that's what I'm just saying, like who would decide who?
We can work on the process because it would start July 1, so we would have time to work on the process.
Okay. All right, that's interesting. And has this board ever had a Chief of Staff that reported directly to the board?
No.
No, so this would be new.
And the board hasn't had elected board members.
No, I know, I guess I'm just, it's just-
The population is growing, so.
Population is growing and we have a, we have a full staff here. I guess I'm just trying to reconcile having redundant positions. That's the only thing, putting out large sums of money for positions that already exist, when maybe we could redirect the work of those already existing positions.
Ms. Pastore?
Okay, I, it's too late to have a description of what that person would do. And I wish we'd had this discussion before we got to this point. I just would like, as a board member, to have a discussion about what exactly we want this person to do. A Chief of Staff of the board. Just-
Who seconded me because I'm thinking of modifying my motion? Okay. Well, the, the job description for the Ombudsman was in the answers that were given as part of the work session in the budget. So they were online. So I'm going to modify my, I'm going to modify my proposal. So I move to amend the proposed budget for fiscal year 2021 by increasing the Board of Education, well, actually, I'm not going to increase. I'm going to withdraw my motion. Okay, then I won't. I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to vote to modify my amendment. I move to amend the proposed budget for fiscal year 2021 by restoring a 1.0 professional FTE position for Ombudsman to respond to BCPS stakeholders. And I'm saying that it's fiscally neutral because it can take the place of the vacant Chief of Communications Officer position. Will you accept that? Yes.
I don't know. So my question is, salary-wise, the vacant Chief Communications Officer position is closer to the Chief of Staff position than the Ombudsman position? So when you're talking about a salary, a net neutral impact on the budget, I thought you were making the motion that those two positions would be replaced, not the Ombudsman, which had an impact of 149, I believe?
Yes, so what-
So I would not support that.
Well, what this would do is it would actually reduce the budget. We would get, the board would get the Ombudsman that it already had for years, where the job description is already in the, in the board answers. And I'm, what I'm saying is, I'm not requesting the Chief of Staff because as Ms. Pastore pointed out, we haven't flushed out a whole job.
Then I would support that.
Okay. Dr. Williams?
May I just suggest that you just make the recommendation for an additional FTE to support the Office of the Board of Education? I've had some thoughts about what to do with that vacant position called the Chief of Communication, not to have another chief, but to look at some other means of using that to provide support to schools. So I would just recommend that you modify that to say there's a need to have an additional FTE, Ombudsman in the Office of the Board of Education.
Okay, so I'm going to modify my motion. I move to, and Tracy, I'll have this for you. I move to amend the proposed budget for fiscal year 2021 by increasing the Board of Education salaries and wages budget by 149,000 for the restoration of a 1.0 professional FTE position for an Ombudsman to respond to BCPS stakeholders to report to the board. Second. Any other discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. The motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Board members, we had one issue that we tabled. Is there any other issue before we go back to the one tabled issue? Okay. The issue that was tabled, excuse me, that was postponed and is now being recalled is the issue of the 15 minutes. And the-
Would you like me to reread it?
There is the motion, yes.
I move that BCPS add 15 million to this budget to provide the school system with funding flexibility to negotiate with bargaining units for adding between 10 and 15 minutes to the school day.
So the discussion that we had earlier related to Dr. Williams's issue, valid issue, with the task of planning and the contingency of funding. And we had left it with a question of, is there a way to try and have master agreement negotiation before we do the February 25 meeting? Yes.
So the last time that we put the 15 minutes in the budget, we didn't have everything figured out. And the budget was contingent and it didn't get funded. And then we had to change things because it didn't get funded. So had it been funded, we would have been adding 15 minutes with just the same amount of timeframe as we're doing it in this situation. And staff recommendation was okay with that when we did it last year. So how is this year different, other than the fact that it's a negotiating year, which should give us more ability to need that in the budget?
That's a good question that I don't have an answer for.
Well, I was just responding to that 10-day component of the motion, really. Which doesn't, I don't think it's, is it still in the motion?
She has a motion that we haven't voted on. So we're discussing-
And it's 1:00 AM, so we're down to nine days.
Okay. Ms. Hen?
So I think maybe, and maybe due to the hour, we may be unnecessarily conflating what we include in the amendment, in the budget, with the negotiations. And by that, I mean, the two may be independent of one another in that we can include what we want. And regardless of how the negotiations go, it's in there. So I would continue to support Ms. Rowe's motion and with the confidence that it's in there because that's the will of the board, if that's the way this goes. So regardless of how negotiations go. And if it's cut like it was last time, it's cut. But we need to ask for what we want.
Any other discussion, board members? All in favor, please raise your hand. The motion carries unanimously. Board members, any other discussions? I just want to appreciate staff, Dr. Williams. This has been the most robust budget cycle and certainly a very robust meeting. We do have, we, we're supposed to have, the next item on the agenda is board member comments. I'm going to postpone those until the next meeting, if that is fine with all of the board members. Everyone fine with postponing the board member comments? Please raise your hand. Please raise your hand, because we're adjusting the agenda. Thank you. The next item on the agenda... The next item on the agenda is item R, information. And the last item on the agenda is announcements. Next board meeting, Tuesday, February 25, 2020, at 6:30 p.m. We're also having Board of Education public hearing on the Pleasant Plains Elementary School Capacity Relief Boundary Recommendation, which is Wednesday, February 26, 2020, at 6:30 p.m. at Lockraven High School Auditorium. Sign-up begins at 5:30. All who sign up will be able to speak. Thank you all for this great work. The meeting is adjourned.